I'm going to call to order our meeting. Good evening, I am Trenae Sriggs, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:04 PM on this 12th day of September 2023. And thank you to all of those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members that are present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex School Board Room Auditorium is Chair Wiggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
There are no student employees or public awards this evening, so we're going to go straight to adoption of the agenda. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Ms. Anderson?
I would like to ask to remove number A under number 14 consent agenda to move number 32 and 33 under A consent agenda, to remove that from tonight's agenda and ask that we bring those two particular items back at the next meeting on September 26th. And my reason for that is because we are still discussing those. In fact, we plan to go back into workshop after our formal meeting tonight and have further discussion. So I feel like we shouldn't be adopting something that we're going to be discussing after the meeting. Thank you.
I would second that. Is there any discussion? Excuse me, is there any other? Ms. Brown?
Sure. Since there's a motion on the floor, I do not support this motion. And the suggestions and the discussions that we are doing in the workshop are to regulations, they are not to these policies. There is no significant changes to policy 5-7. We have already completely discussed 5-31, so I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you. And if the motion fails, I would like to move those from consent to action. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion made by Mrs. Anderson? Hearing none, I'm calling for a vote on moving number 32 and 33 from 14A consent agenda to bring back to our next meeting on September 26th.
Madam Chair, can I clarify? Because the motion that I heard was Ms. Anderson asked for it to be sent back to PRC, not back to the...
No, I did not.
Oh.
I said to bring those back for the 26th.
Your microphone, your microphone's not on.
No, I said I want to bring those back on the 26th, but in the meantime, the PRC will be, will have a chance to talk about those because we are meeting on Thursday of this week. But we also plan to speak about to those, some of these things at our workshop after tonight's meeting.
Okay, Madam Chair, can you clarify the motion, please?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify the motion. Mrs. Anderson has asked to bring 14A, 32 and 33, policy 5-7, non-discrimination and non-harassment of students, and policy 531, student records. Okay? And take it off of tonight's consent agenda and bring it back to the next meeting on September 26th. And it was seconded by Mrs. Owens. Okay? Yes?
So just a question for Madam Chair. Did the PRC already have meetings in depth on this, on this, on these two policies? It's my recollection that they've, they met once and even had a special meeting that they called to talk about these in depth. So if that's the case, I don't know why we're trying to defer it to yet another meeting when we need to get these model policies adopted. This isn't of adopting the model policies, but it is clarifying some parts of it. So I'm just confused as to why we need to bring that back to another meeting. We can't deal with it tonight.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, Mrs. Anderson?
As I said...
Then Mrs. Martin, and then Mrs. Owens.
As I said, we plan to go back into workshop after this meeting. Our plan was to go back into workshop and have further discussion on some of the policies having to do with the 2023 model policies. So I feel like this, there's more to be discussed, there's more to be said. We need to hear everyone out. And so by adopting these through consent agenda, we're cutting everybody off and not here, able to hear people have our discussion about this. So I just feel like, you know, we have unfinished business, we need to take care of it after this meeting, and then therefore I feel like we need to bring it, bring them back on September 26th for action.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, Ms. Martin.
In workshop, we had a discussion about the definition of eligible student and the need to change that definition because it is referenced in 5-7 about six or seven times. And I'm not comfortable voting on 5-7 until I know exactly what eligible student means. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Thank you, and I would support Ms. Anderson's motion. We were given the nine-page document of recommendations in regards to the model policies and how it impacts our current policies and regulations. We're given that this weekend with the goal to work through that at workshop today. If we only got through half of that, I believe as a board, we should have full discussions about the recommendations that were provided to us from administration and our attorney prior to voting on any issues that they may impact. In addition, as Ms. Martin pointed out, Mr. Culpepper has recommended a change that would impact one of the policies and Policy Review Committee will be meeting this week. And Ms. Lennany has already informed us that she needs to pull some additional research for that clarification to make sure that we are wording the eligible student definition the way we need to. It seems counterproductive to vote on it today and then bring it back for changes the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown.
So we met at the Policy Committee meeting twice in August and discussed 5-7, 531. I serve on the Policy Committee with Ms. Anderson and Ms. Owens. The truth is, this chart that we're discussing in the workshop, we've all had this since our agenda packet came out. And it would be prudent if there was specific parts of the regulation, which is what is discussed in these, the regulation, and then there is a policy that is not up for a vote. 5-44 is discussed and 5-63. So these two policies do not impact that. So again, I go back to not supporting it, and I think we need to move forward and vote on it and give our superintendent some direction.
Okay, so we need to go ahead and, is there any other changes? Okay, so there has been a change to the recommendation, a motion to change and leave 32 and 33 on the consent agenda, A...
No, no.
That's what I'm saying, on the consent agenda to bring it back to the next meeting after we find, finish discussing it tonight in our workshop, because we have not finished discussing in workshop the model policies and all of our information that we have. So have a second. All that's in favor of moving those off of the agenda for tonight until the next meeting on the 26th, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have four ayes.
All that are against taking them off, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have seven nays, so that failed. That did not pass.
Okay, so the adoption of the agenda will be as it is, as... I'm sorry, that was just the amendment. Now, Ms. Brown has a motion. I'm sorry, Ms. Brown.
Sure, I would like to move policy 5-7 and 5-31 to action, please, thank you.
Okay, so do I have a second? All right, Mr. Culpepper? All right, discussion? Discussion? You want to... Ms. Martin?
Sure, based on our discussion in the workshop, the current definition of eligible student means that any student dual enrolled is treated as an adult.
Madam Chair, this is just on moving it to action, correct? Okay, thank you.
This is to move it to action. It's not, it's not to keep it on consent, to move it to action.
Correct. I don't think we can move it to action until we correct that definition, because then we're voting in favor of any student dual enrolled being treated as an adult.
Mr. Culpepper?
I'm happy to discuss that issue as an amendment during action.
He said he's happy to discuss that amendment during action. Ms. Melnick?
Well, right now it's on consent, so if we move it to action, we're able to talk about it.
Saq.
Ma'am, another choice might be to add an action item after workshop if you don't think you have enough time to do that, another action. So if you, depending on how much time you need to do that, you could actually, you could do other action items, you used to have that in your agenda if you want to spend more time talking about it, otherwise we can just take it up in action.
Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I just, I would like to move forward with the vote to move them to action, and we can discuss it then and have plenty of time. We've, we've discussed the topic a lot in workshop, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so the motion is for the agenda to move item 5-7 and 531. Am I correct?
No.
Policy 5-7 and policy 531 to action. Right.
15 E and F, so you make them 15 E and F.
Okay. Everybody get it? Okay. All in favor of doing that, please raise your hand.
We have 11 ayes, the motion, we have... Ms. Anderson, how did you vote? Yes? Okay, we have 11 ayes, the motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. So we now have adopted the agenda with the exception of 14A, 32, and 33, we are going to move that to 15E. Okay?
And F.
An F. Yes, E and F, to discuss those two policies, policy 5-7 and 531. Okay. Superintendent's report will be on the second meeting, but there are recognitions. So Dr. Robertson, we look forward to the recognitions.
Yeah, so thank you, Madam Chair. We've got four tonight, and we'll start with Heather Schuler. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Heather to be the new Assistant Principal at Windsor Oaks Elementary School. She's formerly been an administrative assistant at White Oaks, a reading specialist and a teacher. So Heather, welcome. And you have some guests. All right, congratulations, thank you. Next up, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Marcus Turner to move from Assistant Principal at Larkspur Middle School to Assistant Principal at Frank W. Cox High School. And Marcus, you have guests. Congratulations, Marcus. Next up, we have Andrea Kearney, who you've, we're pleased you've approved of our recommendation to be the new Coordinator of Behavior Intervention in the Office of Student Support Services. She's formerly a Behavior Intervention Specialist in all of Student Support Services. Prior to that, she was a teacher in several locations. Andrea, you have some guests? Thank you. And last up, we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation of Kamani Vaughn to be the next Director of Elementary Schools. And, okay, yep, that's the next one, sorry about that. Getting ahead of myself. Yep, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson. Okay, so we are now on item 10, approval of the meeting minutes, August the 22nd, 2023, regular school board meeting. Are there any modifications to the, to the August 22nd, 2023 regular school board meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the August 22nd, 2023 minutes as prepared. Ms. Brown is seconded by Mrs. Franklin. All that are in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, the motion did pass.
Thank you. That brings us to our public comments, and they will be, we will be hearing them until 8:00 PM tonight. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through, pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerks prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the school board agenda is for the school board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the school board meeting. Members of the public have the opportunity to provide comments during the meeting by signing up to speak from the podium. Other methods of public comments are not offered during the school board meeting. As a reminder to persons in attendance at tonight's meeting, School Board Meeting decorum guidelines prohibit disruption of the meeting through disruptive clapping, calling by audience members, holding signs that interfere with audience members' ability to view the meeting, or otherwise taking action to communicate with the school board or disrupt the meeting. I'd like to remind everyone who is attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on stage and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. Speakers are responsible for being in the school board room auditorium or online when they are called to speak. When a person, speakers, when a person's speaker's name is called, the speaker should line up in the aisle to wait for their turn on the, at the podium, so as to efficiently have speakers address the school board. Speakers lined up for their turn at the podium may take a seat near the podium to wait for their turn to speak. If a speaker is not present, when called to speak or is not online, or unable to unmute, when called to speak, the school board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. The school board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As just a reminder, we'll be calling three speakers at a time, please come down, and you can take a seat in the front row behind the podium, and Dr. Solner will help with the direction of the speakers. So our first speakers will be AJ Cordero, Zero Childress, and then Hannah Tazak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is AJ Corderero. My pronouns are they/them, and I am a junior at Kellum High School. You have all heard time and time again from me and students like me that the 2023 model policies are discriminatory. I present to you again the Virginia Human Rights Act, which legally protects all Virginians from discrimination on factors of which include gender identity. Cisgender students do not have a problem asking teachers and staff at school to call them by a preferred name. I know of at least four different cisgender AJs at my school. I don't suppose that under the 2023 model policies, any of them would receive a call home if they asked teachers and counselors to refer to them as such. Everyone has preferred pronouns. Everyone's pronouns deserve to be respected. Rejecting a student's pronoun simply because the student is transgender and not cisgender is discriminatory. It is unjust to suggest that transgender and non-binary students take tedious and in many cases dangerous action in order to receive the simple, basic respect of being called by their chosen name and pronouns. If you place transgender and non-binary students in a dangerous position simply because they are transgender and have a preferred name, or because they are transgender and go by certain pronouns, you are discriminating against them. The 2023 model policies, despite specifically stating that they are not going to discriminate against transgender and non-binary youth, suggest exactly that. They do not just suggest it, they ensure it. Furthermore, the VHRA declares that it is the policy of the Commonwealth to preserve our public health, safety, and general welfare. I do not need to repeat the facts and statistics that we have cited over and over and over again that indicate clear as day that these policies will have a massive negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of transgender and non-binary children. This explicit violation of the VHRA makes the threat of lawsuits very, very real. You will be sued if these policies are put into effect. So I ask you, is it worth it? Is it worth forcing these vague discriminatory policies into schools because of a misconstrued view on ethical confidentiality? Is it worth the lawsuits, the loss of teacher employment, the financial burden, and the loss of students' safety? The answer is very simple. It's not. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zero Childress, Hannah Tazak, and then Fabrizio Solis.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my name is Zero Childress. I am a junior at Kellum High School, and I stand before you today to voice my concerns and opposition to the newly enacted 2023 model policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia's public schools. These policies fail to consider essential aspects of age sovereignty and legal implications. One of my primary concerns with these policies is that they treat all students regardless of their age with the same approach. We must acknowledge that children gain freedoms and responsibilities as they grow older. The legal system recognizes this reality, granting minors various rights and responsibilities based on their age. So why should policies that regard a child's autonomy ignore it? For instance, consider the fact that a minor's pregnancy can never be disclosed by a school, highlighting the recognition of their autonomy in personal situations. Additionally, a 14-year-old can be tried as an adult in a court of law, emphasizing their increasing maturity and capacity to be responsible for their own decisions. Virginia Code 54.1-2969 outlines specific medical rights that minors possess, such as the right to consent to STD testing, birth control, pregnancy services, substance abuse treatment, and mental health treatment. These rights underscore that minors have the ability to make significant decisions about their health, often with little parental interference. Virginia Code 54.1-2969 also grants minors adult status in terms of accessing and disclosing medical records related to their health, further emphasizing their autonomy in specific areas. These policies may inadvertently put the school board at odds with the framework established to protect individual rights and provide teens and young adults with their own autonomy. It is important to remember that high school students drive cars, work jobs, and contribute to the economy, just like many residents of Virginia Beach. Equating them to younger children who do not have the same level of contribution and autonomy is not only misleading, but also undermines older students' growing personal responsibility as they shift into adulthood. Another significant concern is the legal risk associated with these policies. The Virginia Human Rights Act explicitly prohibits discrimination based on various factors, including gender identity, in places of public accommodation including educational institutions. By implementing policies that may infringe on a student's gender identity and expression...
30 seconds.
...we risk running afoul of this legislation. In conclusion, these 2023 model policies fail to consider age sovereignty and may expose the school board to a multitude of legal risks. We have to find a balance that respects the rights and autonomy of students while ensuring their safety and well-being. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Hannah Tazak, then Fabrizio Solis, then Bethany Wilmouth.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Tazak, and I'm a senior in the IB program at Princess Anne High School. Proponents of these model policies often claim that these policies protect parents' rights, that these policies protect parents' rights to guide their children's education and upbringing. These are important rights for parents to have, and we are not trying to undermine the importance of a parent's role in their children's life. But these policies do not exactly protect any of these rights, at least not any that are explicitly stated. Parents have a right to make decisions regarding the children, the child's healthcare, but calling a student by a different name and pronouns is not medicinal treatment. While gender dysphoria is listed in the DSM-5, being trans is not inherently a mental illness. Most teachers and counselors are expected to uphold a level of confidentiality with their students. I've been told by my high school counselor that whatever I tell them will remain confidential unless they suspect I am a danger to myself, to others, or being abused at home. It is incredibly unfair and disingenuous to describe this confidentiality as lying or keeping secrets. Would you argue that licensed professional counselors who treat minors lie to their parents, their patients' parents, if they don't give them updates on every therapist session they have? Teens as young as 14 are able to speak or seek out mental health treatment without their parents' consent in the state of Virginia. Would you call the people who treat them liars? If we want to view a student being trans as a mental health condition, parents must be kept informed about, then we must consider a minor's right to confidentiality regarding healthcare that they gain at the age of 14. If we want to view it as students informally transitioning socially, then it should be viewed as just that, informal. Informal, not something that requires deep regulation. While the model policies don't explicitly demand schools must know everything about your child, it does say that schools must keep parents, quote, "fully informed about all matters that must be responsibly expected to be important to a parent, including and without limitation, matters relating to the child's health and social and psychological development." How could schools realistically keep parents fully informed without being fully informed themselves? What information on students would schools have to collect and relay to parents? What information would trans students conceal in order to prevent getting outed to their parents?
30 seconds.
In an attempt to protect transparency, these policies instead place unnecessary burden onto teachers and counselors in attempts to regulate transgender students' informal social transition in ways that could potentially breach the privacy of transgender individuals. These policies do not make any distinction between the treatment of elementary-age students and high school students. It does not acknowledge that while it is reasonable for schools to inform parents about the young, prepubescent child...
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fabrizio Solis, Bethany Wilmouth, and then Charley Hallacher.
Good evening. My name is Fabrizio Solis, and I'm a junior at Kellum High School. I've come here today to speak against the proposed 2023 model policies. Despite their claims, these policies do the opposite of ensure privacy. They tell school faculty to treat students, no matter the age, like they don't have any agency, and are incapable of making their own self-defining decisions. While it is true that it's better for a child to be out to their parents, this only applies to cases where that is the child's choice, because all too often, a child's home life is negatively affected after coming out. These policies threaten to out students without their readiness, taking away their agency and potentially putting them in hard's way. All of this ensures a further deterioration of the relationship between teacher and student, and a decline in trans students' performance and mental health. Governor Youngkin's policies also don't promote respect. They aren't concerned with respecting students, who all have genuine reasons why they tell peers or teachers their preferred means of address before their parents. These policies completely disregard whatever those reasons may be. These policies state that parents are to be informed about their child's gender identity and are to be given an opportunity to object before counseling services pertaining to and are to be given an opportunity to object before counseling services pertaining to gender are given. Students have a right to counseling services within the school building, and these policies allow parents to potentially take that away from mentally vulnerable kids on the basis of an identity that they don't agree with. Beyond these conflicts, I have several questions relating to the implementation of the policies. How are they going to be enforced citywide? Why should parents be able to stop their child from seeking help from school counselors? How would teachers be held accountable if they do not follow these policies? How will the administration know if teachers use a student's preferred means of address without a parent's permission? Will they all be fired? What if a majority of teachers refuse to comply? If a teacher doesn't allow a student to officially use a nickname, how will that stop the student from having their friends use that name? Will a student be disciplined for writing an unapproved name on their assignments or using it with friends? There are so many things left unanswered, especially with the policies being worded very vaguely. Policies like these are being proposed and put into place all over the country. And while defenders of them say that they take politicians out of school, the existence of trans students is not a political statement. This piece of legislation that regulates them is. These policies imply, however indirectly, that trans students are not welcome in our schools. While some people may place their dislike of trans kids on their personal beliefs, the state guarantees freedom of religion and belief, and our public schools are an extension of the state. Personal bias and discrimination have no place in governing our schools. I hope you question these policies and consider rejecting them. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Bethany Wilmouth, then Shalee Halacher, and then Bradley Fish.
Good evening. My name is Bethany Wilmouth. I'm now a sophomore at Salem High School, and I'm here to speak against the 2023 model policies. There's an argument being spread amongst our opposing side, that argument being that the school board does not have the right to reject these policies, or even, at the very least, edit them slightly. This is a notion that has been spread by Governor Youngkin himself. However, he and his team have continuously refused to specify what precisely the consequences of not following through would be. I want to make it clear that I'm not attempting to criticize Governor Youngkin. Truthfully, I don't believe this debate should tie back to whether or not you support Governor Youngkin in the first place, because this issue is more than right versus left. I am, however, questioning him and his team's authority in this matter. When Youngkin appeared on Fox News to speak about the new policies, he was quoted as simply saying, "It's the law." When his spokespeople are asked specifically about this topic, necessarily how they would authorize this implementation, they dodge the question completely, instead repeating the vague remarks we've heard from Youngkin before. I would like to remind the board that it is completely within their rights to stand up for what they believe is best, especially when their opponents cannot even specify what the punishment is for not complying. At the end of the day, there was a similar response to Northam's transgender model policies that were passed in 2021. These policies, contrary to Youngkin's, protected and affirmed the gender of transgender students. Yet, similarly to Youngkin's policies, these policies widely were not put into place. Around ninety percent of Virginia's school boards never passed any policies that resembled Northam's model policies remotely. These school boards faced little to no legal repercussions despite pushback. According to an article published in 2021 by the Virginia Mercury, a memo sent to Virginia divisions by James Lane, the at-the-time state superintendent of public instruction, stated that they assumed all legal responsibility for non-compliance. However, the VDOE did not have any authority to assess or enforce penalties concerning non-compliance. Nothing in this regard has changed. The attorney general at the time, Mark Herring, had very similar claims that schools were expected to follow these model policies, but refused to acknowledge what the exact punishments would be. This is nearly identical to the statements released by our current attorney general and the spokespeople. In fact, this entire situation as a whole is nearly identical to what occurred with Northam and his model policies a couple of years ago. Yes, they are making claims that you must be forced into accepting model policies regardless of what's best for a district, but how will they enforce this? That question was unanswered with Northam's, and it remains unanswered to this day. That would be due to the simple fact that they're desperate to scare you into passing these discriminatory policies. You have the options to change lives here. You have the option to use your authority for good, to use your authority as a chance to help the students you've all claimed to be so adamant about protecting. Be on the right side of history. Vote against Youngkin's model policies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shalee Halacher, Bradley Fish, then Vivian Rose Duchette.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shalee Halacher. I am fifteen, and I am in my sophomore year at Kellum High School. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I stand before you to shine a light on a matter of utmost importance. Why should we decline the 2023 proposed model policies? Today, I will be focusing on several critical aspects that demand your utmost attention and thoughtful consideration. Firstly, let's discuss the notion of age sovereignty. It is imperative that we avoid referring to all trans students as children. At the high school and middle school levels, students are old enough to recognize and explore their gender identity. By centering the conversation around protecting our kids and our girls, we oversimplify the issue and eliminate nuance. We must recognize that these older students have the capacity to comprehend and navigate their identities, and our policies should reflect that understanding. Now, let's address Ms. Manning's claim that the current policies require keeping secrets from parents. It's essential to clarify that the confidentiality maintained by teachers is not akin to keeping secrets. Rather, it is about respecting a student's right to privacy. It is not an abuse of power, but rather a crucial safeguard to protect students. It's similar to the confidentiality upheld by therapists, ensuring students can express themselves without fear. Manning also claims that not adopting these policies is against the law. However, it is essential to recognize that this isn't the case. As per quality of Virginia, an LGBTQ plus advocacy group, the majority of school districts did not fully adopt the 2021 VDOE model policies set by the Northam administration. This demonstrates that there is a precedent indicating that not strictly adhering to these policies does not result in significant harm nor legal consequences. We must also consider how these current policies have been working. Governor Northam's policies have been put in place for some time now and have not led to a wave of lawsuits or widespread problems in Virginia's schools. In fact, these policies have contributed to creating a safer and more inclusive educational environment. The "if it ain't broke, don't fix it" adage applies here. There is no compelling reason to replace a system that has demonstrated effectiveness with a new set of policies that raise concern and invites controversy. In conclusion, the decision to decline the 2023 model policy is rooted in a commitment to protecting our students and their well-being.
Thirty seconds.
We must acknowledge the age sovereignty of our students, respect their privacy, and understand that not adopting these policies is not a violation of the law. Moreover, we have ample evidence that these current policies implemented by Governor Ralph Northam have been successful and do not require drastic changes. It is our duty to prioritize the interests of our students and maintain an inclusive and supportive educational environment that we have all worked so hard to build. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bradley Fish, Vivian Rose Duchette, then Orion Davis.
Good evening, board members. I reject the model policies on the basis of how vague and nonspecific they are and how they will negatively affect teachers, counselors, and other staff, and as a believer in student autonomy. Firstly, the 2023 model policies released by Governor Youngkin are a one-size-fits-all policy, and the inherent vagueness in such a strategy needs to be addressed district by district, made to fit each one properly. Imagine what is at stake. Virginia Beach Public Schools is one of the most impressive school districts by academic performance in the state. We did not get here on the backs of policies that were a one-size-fits-all approach. You all have an important duty on the board to ensure that our district's academic performance remains high and our standards remain professional, and there is good reason to believe that Youngkin's 2023 model policies will not be good for Virginia Beach. Students under too much stress will perform poorly compared to those who are operating with less stress, and these policies will stress the trans and non-binary students, pulling down their grade averages. If a teacher is suspecting that a staff member will report back to their parents, parents who may be unsupportive, as roughly fifty percent are, as is the Trevor Project's research, then that is a large minority of students who will be battling with higher stress levels and, as a result, lower grades. In addition to this, there is an entire demographic that will be similarly negatively affected, and that is the non-binary community. This community, which the 2023 model policies mention not even a single time, will be suffering to a similar degree because of them. This is the nature of the vagueness that defines many of my issues with the policies. This is not a good fit for our school district and should be adjusted accordingly. Secondly, beyond just the students, who are half the equation in any school, there are the teachers, the guidance counselors, and other members of staff. They are the good people of Virginia Beach that work hard every week in classes from 7:25 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for high schoolers and also work during time off to ensure every student gets the appropriate report on their grades. This workforce is dutiful but stretched thin. Low wages, long hours, and now the 2023 model policies want teachers to begin grappling with the complex ethics of outing a student to their families. What teacher would want to do this? Antagonizing a dwindling number of teachers, teachers who love their jobs simply because they love to teach. It's a recipe for many of them to leave. Many of them will protest against this board, and many of them, all by themselves-
Thirty seconds.
-will reject the model policies in their classrooms, because it is not a good fit for Virginia Beach. Our priorities as an academically successful district are more important than following verbatim what the governor wants. This is another major point of failure for the 2023 model policies. Please reject the model policies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vivian Rose Duchette, Orion Davis, and then Kiara Butters.
Greetings, members of the board. My name is Rose Duchette, and I am a senior at Kellum High School. My most difficult and interesting class this year is AP Government and Politics, a college-level class that, amongst other things, requires us to analyze and memorize landmark Supreme Court cases. My teacher is fantastic at her job and has already given us several tools to dissect these cases and their meanings. Please allow me to share a condensed version of her recent lecture on constitutionality. The U.S. Constitution's original goal was to equate liberty with property. Every modern notion we have of American freedom today is simply incorrect. The founding fathers of our country based our governing document on giving the vote only to those who owned extensive land and capital. Obviously, this idea is no longer applicable, so the Constitution has been amended. It is exceedingly difficult to amend the Constitution, and yet we have done so twenty-seven times. Rights to free speech, guns, fair trials, freedom from slavery, and the vote for all have had to be individually established into legal code as our country grew. The Constitution and its amendments are the core of America. So what does the Supreme Court do? Like every court in the U.S., the Supreme Court is here to decide legality. If a case makes it to the top through our appeal system, the Supreme Court will decide if it has a leg to stand on based on the Constitution. A Supreme Court majority opinion on a case sets the precedent for all related cases in the United States. Simply put, they decide if a law is or is not constitutional. Allow me to break down a relevant Supreme Court case the way I would for my AP Government assignments. In 2020, Bostock versus Clayton County established that Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act guarantees protection from discrimination on the basis of gender and sexuality. The 1964 Civil Rights Act is a federal law protecting individuals from discrimination and is one of the most influential pieces of civil rights legislation in the United States. The Bostock case was heard alongside two other extremely similar cases involving transgender and gay individuals. And the eventual outcome stated that gay and transgender individuals are, in fact, protected under the Civil Rights Act. This precedent has since been upheld and will remain in place for the foreseeable future. To reiterate, you cannot discriminate against an individual on the basis of gender or sexuality. This is the precedent sent by the Supreme Court of the United States. That means that if and when a transgender student is harmed as the result of the 2023 model policies, they will be able to sue with precedent solidly in their favor. This is not a maybe. It will happen. The model policies are by their very nature discriminatory in singling out transgender students, and when a student is in due course irrevocably harmed, it will go to the courts. All of this leads to my closing question. What part of the school budget will be slashed to pay off that first plaintiff and the many to follow? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Orion Davis, Kiara Butters, and then Lucas Tyree Herman.
Good evening, board members. My name is Orion Davis. My pronouns are he/him, and I am a senior at Salem High School. Youngkin's 2023 model policies are asking too much of staff that are already often overworked. It places teachers and faculty members into a position that they did not ask to be in by forcing them to inject themselves into private student matters. It is simply not the school's job to relay a student's private information to a parent, putting a strain on both the family's relationship and that of the student and teacher. Teachers have many things to worry about to ensure the education of all of their students, and this should not be one of them. Spending time having to navigate difficult conversations that should be between a parent and a student, once the student is ready, is not in any way beneficial to the learning environment. It does not eliminate a student's desire to use a different name or pronouns, but it does eliminate the safety that they feel at school, both with teachers and friends, for fear of being outed. It is detrimental to a student's education if they are either constantly in distress from being deadnamed and misgendered or constantly in fear that they will be outed before they are ready. Such overwhelming and frequent stress takes away from a student's focus from things like paying attention in class, participating in extracurriculars, and getting involved in school activities. Our Fourteenth Amendment rights guarantee our right to privacy, which excludes the public sharing of private facts. The Supreme Court has ruled that students do not shed their rights once they are at school. In fact, students have more autonomy than many parents might expect. At the age of fourteen, minors are old enough to seek out mental health treatment without their parents' consent. Most mental health professionals by law must abide by ethical standards of privacy and cannot legally disclose issues regarding their patient's mental health. The only exception is if the student is actively in danger of harming themselves or others, in which case, parents are then informed. If counselors who are trained to deal with the relationships between children and parents are expected to uphold a minor's privacy, then what legal precedent exists that would allow a teacher, who is less qualified in this particular instance, to contradict these commonly understood practices by outing a student? These policies neglect to take into account the extra burden they will place on teachers and counselors and the extra stress they'll place on transgender students. I urge you to keep in mind how these policies will shape the relationship between students and teachers and the burden that will be placed onto your schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kiara Butters, Lucas Tyree Herman, and then Amati Prince.
Good evening. My name is Kiara Butters, and I'm here to speak out against Governor Youngkin's 2023 model policies. Throughout my schooling, I've befriended several trans people. Some socially transitioned within the time I knew them, and some had already socially transitioned when we met. In meeting so many people, you get to know them, and you learn that they are just that, people. People who experience their identities and lives in unique ways, people who come from unique families and backgrounds. Some of my friends have accepting parents, while some do not. And they all navigate their relationships with their families in different ways. Something that stood out to me about these policies is that it seems as though schools are attempting to regulate something that honestly cannot be regulated. Requiring teachers to only call students by their legal name and pronouns unless asked otherwise by a student's parents is not going to make a student any less trans. Requiring teachers and counselors to inform parents about their student's gender identity isn't going to stop them from socially transitioning. It only means that students will ask their friends to deadname them in front of school staff, and it only means that students will find it harder to thrive in school. Many say that these policies will improve transparency between schools and parents, but in fact, the fact of the matter is, these policies won't prevent students from keeping secrets from their parents. It guarantees it. It insensitizes students to be less open with their teachers and counselors, which strains their relationships with them and their parents, and that helps no one. I read through this board's drafted policies regarding the treatment of transgender students, and I was glad to see that the PRC rejected the VDOE's definition of a transgender student. It defined it as a public school student whose parents have stated in writing that the student's gender differs from the student's sex. Not only does this conflict with the Virginia Human Rights Act's definition of a transgender person, but it removes a trans student's agency implying that they are only really trans if their parents say so. I cannot stress enough that involving schools into private matters of student and their families will not give parents the ability to determine whether or not their child is trans, but it will instead only ensure that trans students hide from their parents even more than they already might. We've seen in the past, other Virginia school boards do not have to follow the policies set by the governor down to the letter. This board can adjust and amend these policies to best suit Virginia-
Thirty seconds.
...while still being in compliance with the law. And we can see this board's efforts to do so through its drafted policies. We hope that you reject the parts of Youngkin's policies we have criticized most thus far and develop policies that are best for our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lucas Tyree Herman, Amati Prince, and then Kylene Bond.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Lucas Tyree Herman, and I am a junior at Kellum High School. I will discuss Governor Youngkin's model policies to require teachers to out trans students to their parents, why I don't agree, and how this affects all of us. The world has changed since you all were my age, and my experience in school are vastly different from yours. Most of you grew up prior to widespread use and availability of the internet. You didn't have the constant pinging of a social media account or the ability to submit an essay at the click of a button. What a majority of us hold in our pockets right now was something you could ever dream of. While some of the things- While some of the things you were worried about in high school as a high school stage student going through junior high and high school may have been similar to our worries, many are not. However, being accepted as a person you are is likely one we have in common. In the times in which you attend junior high and high school, you yearn for a place to explore, find, and safely be yourself. Today, amongst a polarized nation, my generation of students yearn for that place too. Why is this important? It is important because like those who came before us, we all need places in which we can grow and flourish. Part of our schooling is exploring our likes and dislikes, our interests, and what we might want to do in the future. We spend years being assigned the task of "who are you?" and being asked to find our own identity. I watched my own sister go through this very process. My older sister is trans, and her name is Rachel. We shared a room from the day I was born until our senior year at Kellum. I saw how not living her authentic self was causing her so much pain. I'd watch her go in in the middle of summer in a one-hundred-degree heat wearing jeans and a hoodie. I saw the pain she was in as she tried to figure out who she was and why did she didn't feel at home in her own body. Over the summer of her senior year, she told me she started wearing women's clothes. When she wore these clothes, I could tell she was happier than I ever remembered seeing her. She was growing into what she was, she was growing into who she was and excited to continue down her own path. Over the next few months, I saw her grow into her true authentic self. She first came out trans at a school to a class she knew would support her, and that would let her come out to others when she was ready. While she was ready to tell her friends, she was still very nervous about coming out to her parents. She was afraid of what was going to happen when she did tell them, even though at the end they were very supportive. If the model policies are followed, others like my sister won't be allowed to have this same safe place that she loved. They will instead have their privacy violated. If teachers have to tell their parents about their child's identity before that child is ready, who knows what could happen? Let students grow into themselves at their own place. Please heavily amend it, reject the 2023 model policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amati Prince, Kylene Bond, and then Jay Cook.
Good afternoon. My name is Amitai Prince. I'm seventeen. And I'm speaking on behalf of the students in relation to the 2023 transgender model policies. One of the biggest reasons-
Excuse me, can you put that microphone closer to your mouth so we can hear you?
Yeah. One of the biggest reasons that parents or adults may support this bill is because they feel that it protects their rights as parents to be in the know about their kids and their lives. But I think that there's been a misunderstanding. I don't think anybody here is trying to deny the fact that when parents are involved in their kids' lives, their kids are more likely to succeed. When a parent shows up to their kid's soccer game or attends a parent-teacher meeting or helps them with their college applications, they are serving as a protective factor in their child's life. But when we talk about parental involvement being a positive factor in a young individual's life, we're talking about parents showing up and caring. We are not talking about taking away an individual's personal autonomy, and that does not constitute the research that shows that parents are better off being involved in their parents' life. I am seventeen. I pay taxes. I make my own food. If I run a red light, I have to appear in court. If I rack up credit card debt, that ruins my credit score. In the majority of my life outside of school, I am responsible for the consequences of my own actions. Look, this policy is complicated. You know, y'all have been here for like a year, you know, discussing this, trying to figure out the right solution. But I think that we can all agree, at least to like a little bit, that a seventeen-year-old having to ask their mom if they can use a nickname, that's silly. And I find it just a little bit demeaning. I am seventeen. I am very much responsible for myself in many ways, and I deserve to have an iota of personal autonomy. This bill is not about parent rights. And the people opposed to it are not about taking that away. We want parents to be involved in their kids' lives, but that doesn't have to mean taking away students' rights. This bill is also not just impacting transgender individuals. Quite frankly, it inconveniences everybody. It inconveniences Gregory, whose dad name is also Gregory, and he doesn't want to go by that. He wants to go by Greg. It impacts Samantha, who just wants to go by Sam because their grandmother just died and it makes her sad to hear the name of the grandmother just passed. It impacts probably thirty percent of the kids in my classes that go by a nickname, that don't want to have to ask their parent for consent because they should have the right to just choose to use a nickname. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kylene Bond and then Jay Cook.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kylene Bond. I'm a senior attending at Floyd E. Kellum High School, and I'm here tonight to also share with you why I believe that we should reject Governor Youngkin's 2023 policies. Before I begin with my speech, I'd like to give a real thank you for the genuine sorrow and I guess empathy that you guys were willing to have with me during the last meeting, knowing that I went into some deeper topics. So I really did want to thank you. Moving on from that, though. We argue a lot that children and teens are too young to make decisions about gender and sexuality without parental supervision, but accept that we can be seen as adults in different scenarios, such as being tried as an adult in court of law or being allowed employment and like having medical autonomy. We can choose to go through processes like consenting to treatment for things as substance abuse and mental health and birth control without a parent's knowledge, but we can't go by another name without our parents' knowledge or a pronoun. You can go and be to your gynecologist and be like, hey, I'd like to go on birth control, and you don't have to tell your parent about that. But you go to school and you go, hey, my name's Kylene. I do prefer to go by Kai. Now I have to go and contact my parent about that. We tell transgender students that they cannot be themselves without someone else's permission, that they are nothing but the product and property of their parents, while their cis peers apparently are not. My friends and I have spoken for months about the toll the "don't be trans" policies will take on your student's body and how they will affect not only students but teachers too. We've been here since September of 2022, and we are tired of facing the same threats we've been fighting for so many months. In elaboration, I strongly believe that behind every student, there should be a teacher there that believes in them and supports them and just does what they believe is best for their students. Just last month, I was volunteering at a car wash. It was a senior car wash, and all the teachers, they could come to Kellum, and they could get their car washed for free. It was a really nice gesture that we did, and I got the opportunity to speak with some of them on these policies. And they all disclosed to me that they felt uncomfortable with the idea of Youngkin's policies and did not agree with having to misgender their students. They all told me that they personally would be willing to lose their jobs over these policies because they didn't want to follow them because it made them uncomfortable. Both the students and the teachers of your school district have expressed their dislike for these policies, and yet you still seem to lean towards the words and opinions of unaffiliated and unaffected individuals. So please reject them. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Jay Cook.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jay Cook, and I'm a senior at Ocean Lakes High School. It's hard, coming here week after week and speaking, knowing that much, if not all, of what we say falls on many deaf ears. It is hard to feel that no matter how much we push, no matter the points we make, we will not sway you, and it will all be for naught. I cried tears of joy and relief in this building on the morning of June thirteenth, as did many of my peers. I cried because the passing of Ms. Owens's resolution was a symbol of our fight, that we were heard. I cried that morning because I had the slightest bit of hope that our victory would mean that I would not have to stand here and plead with you ever again. But I'm here. And I will ring myself drive everything I could possibly say at this podium to get you to hear us just one more time. For those of you who may be swayed by the emotional and moral implications of these policies, trans kids will die. Trans kids will suffer and hide and feel unwelcome and unworthy. Trans kids will feel scared. Kids will feel scared. Kids will fold into themselves and live their days shadowed by the fact that they cannot trust anyone with who they are. Kids will die. For those of you who take more to practicalities, implementing these policies as they are is not feasible. It is impractical and costly in regards to budget, time, and staff, and even if it is implemented, it is not permanent. There is no logic in it, and the idea that treating elementary school kids the same as high school kids and not providing working teenagers the same rights they are given in workplaces, enforcement is implausible and unspecified. Why pass policies that aren't realistically applicable? For those of you who are sympathetic with the teacher's perspective, what a burden we are asking to put on our faculty and students. The cast aside their morals and relationships with their students to make calls or reports to counselors and to betray the trust they have with their students, to potentially put their students in jeopardy outside of school. We are asking them to bear that kind of burden. How many of those teachers do you think will take kindly to that? How many can you afford to lose? And to those of you who may be worried about legal consequences, look at the Virginia Human Rights Act, at the Fourteenth Amendment, at Bostock versus Clayton County. Legislation meant to protect us, legislation we thought would protect us, legislation that these policies stand face-to-face with and openly challenge or blatantly ignore. Why waste money on impending lawsuits that could be avoided? Why put yourself in such a vulnerable position?
Thirty seconds.
I reviewed the drafted policies in this meeting's agenda. It is clear that the board has listened to us, even if only a little. We can see so through the amendments that you have made. I come to these meetings time and time again because despite my fears, I have hope. I believe that this board truly does listen to us. You listened when you passed Ms. Owens's resolution. Please, please continue to hear us and heavily amend or reject the 2023 model policies. Thank you.
There was our last student speaker. We'll move on to the next set of speakers. Again, we'll be calling three at a time. Please come down and sit in the row behind the podium. Our next speakers are Matthew Cody Connor, Thea Ross, and Kathleen Slindy.
Well, clearly, a lot of people have a problem with the existence of LGBTQ, especially trans people. With hundreds of bills across the nation and policies like Governor Youngkin's in our schools, I don't think that's really up for debate. The attacks on teachers and education, LGBTQ children and their families are especially despicable. And you can call it whatever you want, biblical citizenship, traditional family values, religious freedom, parental rights, just like others before you have. But it's ignorance and discrimination and bigotry. And history will remember it as such. That may not dissuade you, just like there's nothing you can say to me that'll make me believe anybody has the right to dictate anybody else's identity. Not government to citizen, not parent to child. And for the parents out there watching that'll see this, if you do not know when something important is happening in your child's life, you are not paying close enough attention. And if your child does not tell you how they feel, you have not made them feel safe. And you can blame teachers, you can blame schools, you can blame the government all you'd like, but those failures are yours and yours alone. The school board do whatever they want, but it's also clear that a lot of parents have a problem with having LGBTQ students. If that weren't the case, then those students, those kids would not be so overrepresented in our homeless youth population. It was Plato that said, "Do not force your children into your ways, for they were created for a different time." Children will grow into who they are. It may not be what you understand or what you wanted, but it's also not your life. And you may want them to go back to being who you thought they were, but the butterfly does not miss being a caterpillar. And there are far worse things than your child being themselves. If you cannot love, support, and accept them for who they are, you will push them right into all of the things you are trying to protect them from. If you want to keep your child off of drugs, accept them and be a safe space. If you want to keep your child off the streets, accept them and be a safe space. If you want to keep your child alive-
Thirty seconds.
If you want to keep your child, love, support, and accept them for who they are. For the school board, history probably won't remember me, but I promise you will. This ignorance and bigotry is aimed at my children and my family. And so you will find me here standing against it until either it is gone or I am.
Our next speaker is Thea Ross, Kathleen Slindy, and then Jim Moreland.
Thank you. My name is Thea Ross. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a graduate of VBCPS. I stand tonight to discuss the rights and well-being of trans students here in my hometown. Let's be clear. Parents have no right to dictate their child's identity. They are not property. Schools should not be abused as tools to report on students due to parental failings. Make no mistake, a child distrusting a parent is a failure. Most of us are here for one purpose, to protect and uplift children. Some have come for other reasons. Their issues are with folk like me. Not a deprivation of any natural or legal right. They cynically abuse the notion of parental rights to wage a culture war for supposed righteous reasons. I suppose because the church was all done and finished treating the sick and housing the homeless. I digress, you know? Discrimination against a student because they are transgender is immoral, because if there is a God, then She made me. And I have to believe that She made me and my trans sibs for the same reason She created wheat, but not bread, so that we could all share in the beauty of creation. Children have the right to express their views freely, but parents shouldn't have absolute access to their hearts and minds. Access and trust must be earned, not taken for granted, let alone demanded from the local government as if teachers are somehow supposed to enforce identity like some sort of publicly funded gender police force. Reject such authoritarianism on face. Schools have a responsibility to provide safe spaces for all kids, support policies that protect trans students. We should respect names, respect pronouns, and respect their identities, their right to explore and discover and learn. Make it clear that bullying and discrimination have no place here, doubly so under the dubious guise of protecting kids. Parents, listen to your children without fiery judgment. Support them, love them for who they are, not who you want them to be. Don't let your fears and prejudice become burdens that they're forced to carry their entire lives. Accept your neighbors, accept difference for all of our sakes. Trans and gender questioning kids are navigating a world that often tells us trans folks we're broken or wrong, but we are no such thing because being trans is beautiful, and those who hate us ought to speak plainly about their disdain. Let's focus on what really matters here, though. Protecting and uplifting kids in our community. Let's respect their identities and their journeys as a community. We must guide youth toward becoming the best version of themselves as defined by their hearts and confirmed via their growth and joy and good works. That's our responsibility as parents, as educators, as human beings, and as a community.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, Jim Moreland, and then Diana Muscovac.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rigs. Vice Chair Wiems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Kathleen Slindy, and I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. My comments tonight are related to the budget, so a different topic here. I'm going to join first. I'm going to join Mrs. Melick when she congratulated our division employees and students on the VDO's recently released SOL test scores and the school quality indicators data. That data indicates that all VBCPS schools will earn state accreditation again in 2023-24. Referencing this, our school leadership shared that the VBCPS exceeded the state level of performance in all subject areas and outperformed all local divisions in reading, writing, and science. And also, VBCPS outperformed seven other comparable divisions in Virginia in reading, mathematics, and science. These results are the product of employees' hard work and dedication, as well as the efforts of the students and all who propelled and supported their learning last year. Obviously, this is to be celebrated. And it's also about the budget and funding for employment and for our resources. Imagine if this was the headline. "VBCPS Has Exceeded the State's Level of Self-Reported Employee Job Satisfaction." This could happen if VBCPS had working and learning conditions so great that articles were being written about how satisfied employees were reaching out to invite others to work here and encouraging young people to enter this profession. And what if there was a headline that read, "VBCPS Outperformed Seven Other Comparable Divisions in Virginia in Employee Compensation"? Talk about a great press release. This would accelerate recruitment of the very best and brightest in our profession, bringing them to Virginia Beach, and it would increase our retention rates. It is true that the division made progress by restructuring some of the pay scales last year, but there is still work to be done. In August, local news stations reported that VBCPS is fifth out of our five localities for new teacher pay. So we lost out on exceptional applicants who sought a bigger paycheck. And there is also VDO data that shows that we have vacancies, more vacancies than our neighboring school divisions. Again, we are not fully staffed. How different it would be if VBCPS pay scales attracted all the best candidates. We would be fully staffed, we would continue to get outstanding results, and we would retain the experienced professionals that we've already invested in. retain the experienced professionals that we've already invested in. The approved General Assembly state budget has new funds available for our school division. I challenge you to be bold in the use of these funds. And finally, for the years, employees have come to this meeting asking you to put people before programs, and now is the time to do that. As work begins on the new budget, prioritize supporting your employees and your students with funding that will improve the working and learning conditions, provide salaries and benefits, and will attract excellent potential employees to the beach. And as always, the VBA, its members and leadership stand ready to partner with you in this work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Moreland, Diana Muscovac, and then Richard Pickens.
Good evening. I'd like to address three groups tonight concerning the 2023 Governor's Model Policy. First, to the school board. James 1:8, it states that a double-minded person is unstable in all their ways. So I ask specifically, Ms. Franklin, how could you possibly abstain from the vote in the last meeting concerning the Governor's Model Policy? If you couldn't make up your mind on something this important, what else are you indecisive about? I'm urging you to switch your abstention to a "for the Governor's Model Policy." You don't get to sit on the sidelines and hope you come out unscathed. You're there to make decisions and to work for the people, and you were voted in by the people. If others feel the same about this, you should email her and please try to persuade her to support the policy. To the five that voted against the Governor's Model Policy, at least you chose a side. However, what you did not do was follow rules, rules that you made. When your guy was in the governor's mansion, you made it mandatory that every school needed to follow the model policy. Tyrannical rules concerning COVID, rules that affected my daughter when she was in high school. She was in IB. She didn't have a graduation. She got a made-up grade because she wasn't able to take IB tests, and she was robbed of a lot. I would just let you know that I know I probably will not change your mind, but we will try to remove you through the election process. I know that this will be difficult, because separating chaff from wheat is always difficult, and I'm up for the task. To the second group, I'd like to address Christians. Our struggle is not against these young adults. Our struggle is for these young adults. Ephesians 4:15 says to speak truth in love. Matthew 5:44 says to love those that hate us. Matthew 22:37 says to love the Lord thy God with all your heart. And verse 38 then adds that the second greatest commandment is to love thy neighbor as thyself. But those last two verses are inexorably tied together. If we don't obey the second, is it impossible to obey the first? We can't love God without loving these people. So follow John, 1 John 3. Don't just love in words, love in deed, love in truth. If you're speaking tonight, start off tonight by saying, "I love you." We do love them.
Thirty seconds.
We do care them. Lastly, to the LGBT community, Jesus does love you. I love you. We all love you. We want what's best for you, not just physically, but emotionally and spiritually as well. When I was a youth and adult, those that spoke truth and love to me were the ones that I loved and respected the most. The truth will set you free. I'm inviting you to my church tonight, which is on 408 Foxwood Drive in Virginia Beach. It's New Day Church. Come and hear Jesus.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diana Muscovac, Richard Pickens, and then Tom Connet.
Let's get to the heart of the matter. The lives of our children depend on us getting to the heart of the gun violence situation in our schools. I have a question for you. What if we changed the hearts of people by starting at a young age, say like kindergarten? What if we intertwined the godly principles that this country was founded on in history class for all grades? Let's start with George Washington. What if a history class went something like this? George Washington, our first president, gave the first presidential oath in the first inaugural address. On that cool April day in New York City, Washington followed in the footsteps of the biblical heroes like David and Solomon, making a covenant with God. George Washington knew that God honors covenants and that God would always keep his end of the bargain. The question is, would the United States of America keep hers? Washington opened the Bible at random to Genesis 49. He placed his left hand on the open Bible and raised his right hand. He then proceeded to take the following oath, like all presidents do after him. "I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of the United States and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States, so help me God." Washington bent over and in an act of reverence for God kissed the Bible. Within the first inaugural speech, he made a covenant with God by saying, "Since we ought to be no less persuaded that the perpetuous smiles of heaven can never be expected on a nation that disregards the eternal rules of order and right, which heaven itself has ordained, and since the preservation of the sacred fire of liberty and the destiny of the republican model of government are justly considered as deeply perhaps as finally staked on the experiment entrusted to the hands of the American people." When Washington says perpetuous smiles of heaven, he is making it clear that no nation can expect to be blessed by God if they turn away from him. When Washington says disregards the eternal rules of order and right, he is saying, "If a nation forgets God, she will lose the blessing that God has given her." Washington made a promise that the United States of America would follow God. One question remained, would the United States of America keep her promise? I researched the history curriculum of the Virginia Beach school system and found nothing teaching about how America was founded on our forefathers' Christian beliefs. Intertwining the godly influence that our founding fathers depended...
Thirty seconds.
...when they made decisions on the events that we study in history class today is not only possible, it's legal and legitimate, and a legitimate academic pursuit for public schools. It looks like with all the gun violence in schools, that the US of A did not keep her promise. When we took God out of our schools, guns entered. It's time Virginia Beach Public School System becomes a testimony to begin to end gun violence in schools by changing one heart at a time.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Richard Pickens, Tom Connet, and then Brenda Pence.
Governor Yonkin has granted an absolute pardon to Scott Smith, the Loudoun County father, who was wrongfully prosecuted and convicted for standing up for his daughter who was sexually assaulted at school and then lied about to the school system. And in Oklahoma, I guess there's a new principal, Shane Mernan, a drag queen, that's going to be working with small children, at least for a short time. And you start looking at these things, you see a pattern that's happening across, not just here in Virginia Beach, but across the nation. And you can't escape the fact that there's some deliberate maneuverings going on that need to be addressed. And so I don't live everywhere else, but this is the place I live, and this is the place I come and I love. And tonight, I want to stand up for the parents, because every time I come and hear people speak, they always act like the parents are some kind of emotional basket cases, and they can't handle their kids, and they're the worst and most harmful to their kids, and they can't talk to their kids, and their kids can't talk to them. And I think that's just shameful. I really appreciate my parents, and I know they're a lot of great parents, and so I just want to talk about that. I think it's audacious and rude of young people and adults, no matter how well-intentioned, to cheer on their friends to thoughtlessly abandon what should be one of the most important relationships throughout their life, and that's their parents. And a caterpillar doesn't want to go back to being a butterfly, because he's his authentic self, he's a butterfly. But he also doesn't require, ask for drugs to stop himself from becoming a butterfly. And that's what we're saying. We see that the drugs are harmful. I've researched them, and anyone who recommends them or encourages someone to take the drugs or the surgeries is not doing any good thing to their kids. And so we're seeing this culture developed in school systems and in the literature, and we've got books at Norfolk that say to kids at these little tables, "You're not a boy or girl when you're born, that's chosen later." And that's an absolute outright lie, and it should be abhorred by all and should be removed immediately. So I think parents have a real hard process, because they're being told by their children, "If you don't accept me for who I am, I'm going to kill myself." And I just want to say, when you come to a decision where your solution is to kill yourself, the problem is greater than getting your parents to allow you to do one thing or another. You need a pastor, you need prayer, you need good counsel to help you go down a better and more healthy path. And so you need to hear the loving words of "Let's talk," and you need to hear the words "No." I don't believe adding more counselors to the school system will help. I can only imagine what type of counseling is currently being pumped into the impressionable brains and hearts of current students. And I will say to students...
Thirty seconds.
If you are under the age of 18, you are considered maybe not a small child, but you're children. You have to acquiesce and be under the care of your parents. But you're a year away from being able to make all the stupid decisions you want on your own. But if to this point, we want to help you, protect you, keep you safe, and we say we need to go to the governor's policies, can't believe we didn't do that. Jennifer Franklin, shame on you. You said you were conservative, but let's get back to business, and let's get back to education.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Tom Connet, Brenda Pence, and Rachel Joyner.
The Code of Ethical and Professional Conduct for members of the School Board of Virginia Beach that you all signed states, "While serving as a member of the school board, I will aspire to be an ethical and professional public servant responsible for our school division. To that end, I will strive to first, serve with integrity and fairness while adhering to school board bylaws and policies, local, state, and national law in all matters concerning the provision of high-quality teaching and learning experiences for all students attending VBCPS. The definition of integrity implies trustworthiness and incorruptibility to a degree that one is incapable of being false to a trust, responsibility, or pledge. The quality of having strong moral principles that you refuse to change." Vocabulary.com says integrity means doing the right thing in a reliable way. It means a person has a moral compass that does not waver. A girl of about eight in children's church on Sunday said that integrity means doing the right thing even when you're all alone. Hypocrisy, on the other hand, is behavior that contradicts what one claims to believe or feel, that is the opposite of what they do or say at another time. How can we teach our students to be people of integrity when this school board did not live up to its own code of ethics in the last meeting? Instead of acting in a reliable way with a moral compass that doesn't waver, the board failed to adhere to state law and enact the DOE model policies, even after the chairman stated, "If and when our governor decides to put it out, we will be doing that." One board member took the coward's path and abstained so as not to go on record of either supporting or opposing the policy. What are you saying to staff and students if you publicly choose to flaunt the directions of your government? It's okay, then, for them to refuse to follow your policies? If you can't live up to your own code of ethics and lawfully do what you're elected to do, I suggest that you step down and let someone who can do the job step in. What am I saying? Stop the legal wrangling and delay tactics and implement a DoD policy as it's been sent down from Richmond. That is your duty. In the process, please review the policy of giving children head-of-the-line privileges at these meetings. This is nothing more than a tactic that is meant to silence or eliminate the voices of parents and taxpayers who have the greatest stake in our education system. By making the real adults in the room wait until late at night to voice their opinions, the public thinks that the opinions of ill-informed and immature youngsters are the majority opinions in the room, which is just not the case. If students want to speak, by all means, let them, but require them to follow the same procedures as anyone else. Change this ill-advised policy now. Can we get on with focusing on education and as leaders begin to teach and lead by example? You demonstrate real integrity by your actions, not just by your words. So do what you say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brenda Pence, then Rachel Joyner, then Noah Moreland.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Pence, a retired Virginia Beach school teacher and still a very concerned citizen. How could the vote on the 2023 model policies have gone so wrong? It was a no-brainer, simply uphold parental rights. But if over half of the Virginia Beach School Board voted against parental rights, especially when the vote permits the sexualizing and indoctrination of minor children, then parents, one by one, need to speak up and take back their rights. Therefore, I suggest every parent and guardian of school-aged children to engage the administrative staff at their children's schools by writing them respectful and definitive letters with a copy hand-delivered to the children's teachers. In other words, since the current model policies have failed parents, it's necessary for the parents to write their own. Parents must be specific, informing the school how to address current issues with their children. For example, your children's names and nicknames, pronouns, biologically sex-appropriate bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports, requiring to be informed if their children demonstrate gender identity confusion, requiring parental consent before any counseling, forbidding the social transitioning of their children, and it goes on. In addition, list what you do not permit your children to be exposed to. For example, sexually explicit books in the school library and classrooms, transgender-affirming assemblies, and field trips. You get the idea. And last, but not least, Virginia Beach schools have awesome administrators and teachers, so thank them for their hard work, and thank them in advance for coming alongside you to support your parental rights. And guidelines. Oh, and remember, your letter will need to be updated yearly, signed, dated, and hand-delivered for each child at the beginning of the new school year and any relocation. Keep a copy for your records. In conclusion, all concerned parents and citizens can share this message with their friends and families through their churches, synagogues, mosques, civic meetings, Facebook accounts, family and neighborhood gatherings, et cetera. It's time for a grassroots movement. Parents must engage principals and teachers to be heard and their guidelines respected and followed, but it requires due diligence. Be aware, whole schools accountable to follow your guidelines for the safety and well-being of your precious children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Joyner, then Noah Moreland, then Joseph Comm III.
Good evening, board members. My name is Rachel Joyner. I'm 23 years old. My pronouns are she/her, and I graduated class of 2018 from Granby High School in Norfolk, Virginia. I stand before you tonight to express the strongest opposition to the proposed 2023 model policies for transgender students. I'd like to use this allotted time to give some insight of my past experience as a transgender high school student, in hopes to illuminate some of the experiences some, if not most of us, face, and how these suggested policies would directly impact trans students. I discovered I was transgender at the age of 16, halfway through my sophomore year at Granby. I still remember in stark detail the first emotion that ran through me when I discovered my gender dysphoria: fear, fear of what my family will think, fear of what my peers will think, fear of a life full of harassment and non-acceptance, and fear of myself. I joined the LGBT club at my school and made friends with other transgender students going through similar struggles and experiences. And despite my own lack of self-acceptance at the time, I found great comfort in these friends. At their suggestion, I decided to come out and confide in a few teachers whom I felt I could trust. Not only was I met with support and reassurance from these teachers, but they decided it would be best to begin using my preferred name and pronouns in the classroom with my permission. Through this, my classmates' learning of my identity brought nothing but acceptance and tolerance to me. And quickly, school became the safest and happiest place for me to be at. At home, I was still playing the role of my parents' son, having to respond to my name given at birth and suppress my own expression. At school, I could truly be myself, the shy girl who was fully devoted to music and wore nothing but panties and jeans every single day. The Virginia Beach City Public Schools' core values, as listed, are to put students first, seek growth, be open to change, do great work together, and value differences. These proposed policies actively work against these core values. They prevent the establishment of a safe environment for trans kids to openly exist and flourish, and they punish teachers who only wish to ensure their classrooms are the perfect places for all students to succeed. They enforce cis-normativity, actively work against positive change, and clearly do not value the differences in diversity within the community. The anxiety and stress transgender students are facing today with the threat of their rights being potentially stripped from them upon the passing of these model policies is unfathomable to me. And I can attest...
Thirty seconds.
I can attest, from personal experience, that the societal pressure transgender people face on a daily basis for not conforming to typical gender expectations, roles, and appearances is more than enough. Please reject these model policies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noah Moreland, then Joseph Comm III, and then Joseph Comm Jr.
There are three stages to ideological gaslighting. First, they say it's not happening. Two, they say it's not happening, but here's why it's a good thing. And three, they say it's happening, but it's not as prevalent as you think. This can be seen in almost every recent ideological narrative in the past decade, from COVID to elections, and now the prevalence of transgenderism in the forefront of our education system. We are currently, at the end of stage two, heading into stage three, that people now admit, yes, transgenderism is being pushed in class, and we are now a step away from people outright saying that transition surgery, double mastectomies, is a pure and righteous thing. The opposite cannot be denied, no matter how hard you attempt to blind yourself... The opposite cannot be denied, no matter how hard you attempt to blind yourself to it. Let me read from you a brief excerpt from an article that hit the news stream this past week that I'll be happy to email to you later, from the Daily Mail. "Parents in a Colorado school district are accusing teachers of breaking state and federal laws by allegedly asking kids about their preferred pronouns in secret surveys. In an email sent by the head of the county's presiding teacher union, instructors were then told, 'If you do a questionnaire, please make it a paper and pencil activity. Any digital record are more permanent and may be requested under FERPA,' it explained. FERPA, or the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, is a federal law that affords parents the right to have access to their children's education records, the right to seek to have the records amended, and the right to have some control over the disclosure of personally identifiable information from the education records. This right does not transfer over to that of a child until they reach the age of 18." This is happening all across America, and we've seen the very consequences of this here in Virginia, where in Appomattox County, Sage Blair, a young girl who was assisted in socially transitioning into a boy by the school staff and without the knowledge of her parents, then ended up being trafficked. Appomattox County School Board is currently being sued by Michelle Blair, the girl's mother. This issue is already going to the courts, and the negative consequences of not implementing these model policies is already clear to see. This isn't about whether schools should be involved in students' lives or not, they're already involved. Our school system has delivered upon itself a responsibility it has no moral right to. Not everything has nuance. Since we care about the law so much, the law has recognized that 18 years old is the age at which we become adults. Thus, anyone younger is, in fact, a child. Pretending black and white conflicts are gray excuses evil and enables injustice. Moral law isn't
Thirty seconds.
...instincts or any set of instincts. It is something which makes a kind of tune, the tune we call goodness or right conduct, by directing the instincts. The moral consciousness, the little voice in the back of your head that tells you when you're about to do something wrong. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Combe III, then Joseph Combe Jr., then Melanie Skaggs.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Thank you, as always, for the opportunity to address you. When I spoke to you for the first time two months ago, I told you a remarkable statistic, that 90% of children who are begun down the path of so-called gender transition through social transitioning will follow through with that transition all the way to its painful, irreversibly damaging, and sterilizing results, so-called sex-change surgeries. And since the process of social transition almost always begins via schools, my allies and I refer to this as the school-to-clinic pipeline. Your vote on the Virginia Board of Education's 2023 model policies last month made plain to our district that you both approve of and intend to bolster this pipeline. Your vote was enabled, in part, by Ms. Linetti's poor excuses for legal advice and Don Robertson's bureaucratic ring-around-the-rosy non-answers. They have both since been rightly humiliated by the Attorney General's legal opinion, but they may have positioned all of you for crippling legal liability in future lawsuits. Choose carefully whether you ever listen to them again. But your rebuke as board members is still forthcoming. Right now, this district perceives five of you as, at best, cowards, or at worst, enablers of and collaborators with perhaps the greatest medical scandal in American history. I am not the first to tell you this, but only you can decide if I am one of the last. That is how history will remember you, and history's verdict is much harsher and longer, lasting than any ballot-box verdict. These children may have been applauding you tonight, but history will shame you forever, right alongside the eugenicists and the witch-trial prosecutors. If the five of you have any interest in rescuing that legacy of yours, you must reverse course immediately. You must ensure parents are notified when their children express confusion about their sexuality and are required to give consent before their child is counseled or socially transitioned, and you must ensure female spaces and activities are reserved for females only. Your policies must be 100% in line with the Board of Education's 2023 model policies. I'll give you one final motivation for why you need to steer this ship away from the iceberg of history. It's time you got familiar with one of those surgeries that policies like this lead to for 90% of socially transitioned children. They are numerous, but I'll briefly describe one. It's called a phalloplasty. Phalloplasties are for women who believe they are men. In the procedure, plastic surgeons fashion an artificial penis that neither urinates correctly nor allows the individual to achieve an erection, much less sexual orgasm. The procedure is riddled with resulting complications and requires follow-up surgeries and care to treat grafting, infection, microscopic sutures, and blood clots that cause open wounds which cannot be sutured closed and have been known to lead to deadly pulmonary embolisms.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, and what do the surgeons use to create this artificial penis? A sleeve of flesh is carved out of the patient's forearm or thigh. This mangling permanently disables the limb almost entirely. Such patients have been known to not even be able to lift a fork anymore. I prayed for you all last time. I still pray for you. I pray you see reason. I pray you find courage, and I pray you choose to partner with parents, not wage war against them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Combe Jr., Melanie Skaggs, and then Carlos Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Joe Combe, and I'm an Anglican priest, and I'm also a lawyer. I lived in Virginia Beach for 30 years, and both of my children attended Salem High School. The lawyer in me is here tonight because, as Mark Twain once said, "History never repeats itself," but it rhymes. And I'm glad there's so many budding young legal scholars here tonight because 96 years ago, our Supreme Court decided a case titled Buck v. Bell, which originated just up the road in Amherst County. A group of men got together and petitioned the juvenile court there to have a teenage girl named Carrie Buck sterilized in the name of compassion and of science. The case made it all the way to the Supreme Court, whereby a vote of eight to one, the court held Carrie Buck could be sterilized against her wishes under a Virginia law duly voted on and enacted. Eugenics was all the rage. So I watch in awe and sadness as history repeats itself with the dystopian name Gender-affirming Care. Gender-affirming care harms families in that school boards and teachers' unions are attempting to insert themselves into roles that solely belong to parents. Gender-affirming care harms children in that nothing can be more cruel than the so-called tenderness or compassion that consigns a child to chemical castration via Lupron, testosterone, and physical mutilation. Children suffering from gender dysphoria are not reducible to one problem, and many teens latch on to gender dysphoria as a way of coping with trauma and distress. Proponents of today's gender-affirming movement, including each of you who have voted against Governor Youngkin's model policies, will some take care of the same stigma of those associated with eugenics movement and the sterilization of Carrie Buck. I'm here as a priest because I know each of us is made in the image of God, and as such, each person is to be treated with dignity and respect. A truly compassionate approach to gender dysphoria would take an individual approach with each child, dealing with the mental, emotional, physical, and spiritual wellness of the entire person. The Book of Genesis affirms a balance between sameness in our common humanity and a meaningful difference between male and female. As you carry out your function as a school board, I implore you to consider this, that the value of a child's innocence is incalculable. As adults and as the school board, you are ultimately responsible for the maintenance of that innocence when children are entrusted to your care. In the Gospel of Matthew
Thirty seconds.
Jesus brings a child forward as the adults are arguing about who's going to be the greatest among them. Jesus says that to enter heaven, one must possess a childlike innocence, and those that mar that innocence will incur dire consequences, something about millstones. I pray each of you will accept your responsibilities to the students of Virginia Beach and make wise decisions regarding their health and well-being.
Our next speaker is Melanie Skaggs, Carlos Taylor, and then Darrell Clark.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Melanie Skaggs. I'm a Virginia Beach resident, taxpayer, mother, and medical professional, and I'm here to share with you some thoughts. First is the basic principle of Governor Youngkin's model policies and how they are crucial policies and tools that will help us fortify the strength of parental and child relationships and involvement. These policies facilitate strong family units, which are the foundational building blocks of this great nation. The family unit has always been one of our greatest strengths. Your failure as a school board to represent your constituents and to pass these model policies is an effort to cause division between parents and children by keeping pertinent and critical information from parents, who are the primary caregivers and advocates for these children. Why is it that when a child has a sore throat or a fever at school, the parents are the first call that the school makes? It's because the parent is the child's most effective resource, ally, caregiver, and support. I ask you, is something that causes emotional and psychological strain on a child such as gender confusion any less of a health concern? Especially if and when they are voicing concerns of hurting or killing themselves. As a medical professional, I have seen and can speak to the negative health impacts that a lack of appropriate support can bring, be it medical support, psychological support, emotional support, most of all parental support. The repercussions are devastating. These children have an amazing resource in their parents, a God-given and holy model of support in their parents, one that no school board nor educational figure could come close to replacing. Instead, I implore you all to join with parents in this effort to provide support and protect our children. They say it takes a village to raise a child, and I believe that a community focused on the well-being of children is the best option that we can offer them. I ask you to consider the consequences of your failure to pass these policies. They are far
Thirty seconds.
...and destructive. Also envision the goodness of surrounding these children with a unified front, placing parents rightfully back at the forefront of the charge for their children's well-being. My prayer is that we love these children enough to do this. It is in their best interest, and that is why we're here, right? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carlos Taylor, then Darrell Clark, and Homer Stinson.
Okay, the last time I was in front of this podium, I posed a challenge to the school board. That challenge was to name me one human being that has successfully transformed themselves into the opposite sex. So by a show of hands, I know you can't converse, which school board member found that person? That's kind of what I thought. Here's what I'm getting at. You spent the last year, or however long it was, writing resolutions and policies in support of something that everybody and their mother knows is impossible, including every single one of you sitting on that panel. You're not even following the science. You basically said, "The heck with the science, this is what we're doing." Some of you deserve to lose your seat on that board simply for the colossal amount of time that you wasted, let alone pitting kids against their own parents. Now, a word from the Sacred Sixty-Six, Proverbs 15, 32 and 33. "The one who refuses correction despises himself, but whoever hears reproof acquires understanding. The fear of the Lord provides wise instruction, and before honor comes humility."
Our next speaker is Darrell Clark, Homer Stinson, and then Natalie Gonzalez.
My name is Darrell Clark. I just want to get this out the way first. It ought to be common sense that students speak first at school board meetings because these policies affect them directly. That should go without saying, but whatever. So there have been scores of people coming up here trying to gaslight these students into believing that their experiences ain't real or that they have a mental illness. And stuff like this happens all the time to folks from marginalized communities, so it's not really a surprise. Like, multiple people have told me that systemic racism doesn't exist as if I've never experienced any kind of form of oppression, and having to explain the harsh realities of our communities time and time again, as if there isn't centuries of well-documented history of it, is exhausting and it's enraging. And that's what these students have been going through. It's the same thing. They've been told they have a mental illness. That's wild and wickishly outlandish. These model policies do not respect or protect trans and non-binary students. Lives have been lost since then due to the lack of respect they've been given. Their intelligence has been insulted on numerous occasions. In particular, they claim that they haven't even read the model policies, which is ridiculous because why are they here? A lot of so-called Christians around here, some who clearly want to breach separation of church and state, saying all these kids need is God because God loves them just how they are or whatever, while also in a multitude of ways saying God condemns them for how they are and should turn away from evil. But those who believe in God should also know that they shouldn't be judging or else they'd be judged for doing so, right? And also, if God is Creator, then He'd been created in trans, non-binary, and queer people since the beginning of time, so all that's irrelevant anyway because trans and non-binary and queer people in general have existed in ancient times, well before Christianity. We're talking about depictions on rock art. That's millions, I mean, that's thousands of years. That's around 2, what, 2,400 B.C.? BCE? So to piggyback off of that, I hope y'all will stop trying to convert these kids into y'all's disgusting and fashi version of Christianity while attempting to perform some revolting and awful version of conversion therapy, because that's exactly what y'all are doing, and it's vile.
Thirty seconds.
There's a lot of talk of parents' rights over students' rights, but who's going to school here? I don't have kids, and I'm clearly not a student, but it's not hard to empathize with them because I've been one, and I hate the feeling of not feeling like my voice didn't exist. It's awful. Y'all just need to reject the model policies, listen to what these students have been saying, and meet their needs now.
Our next speaker is Homer Stinson, then Natalie Gonzalez, then Dan Chang.
Good evening. Parents have been around since the beginning of the human race. I feel confident in that statement. And parental rights are human rights. Sadly, those rights were denied by six school board members who refused to adopt the 2023 model policies at the last public school board meeting. At that meeting, one school board member stated that our governor does not know what is best for Virginia Beach public schools. But does any school board member know what is best for each of the families of 65,000 students in Virginia Beach? The irony, some may say hypocrisy, cannot be ignored. My family and I moved to Virginia Beach 25 years ago when I was in the Navy. My Philippines-born wife had been a legal resident for six years at that time, and while I was out to sea for weeks and months on deployment, she worked a full-time job while caring for our two teenage daughters. Imagine how difficult that was to raise our daughters under those circumstances. Imagine somebody saying, "Why don't you know about your kids?" Now imagine something more difficult, such as that of the parents of Sage Blair. Under Governor Ralph Northam's 2021 model policies, Appomattox County schools went ahead and hid the teen's gender dysphoria from her parents. And subsequently, they knew nothing about the bullying that accompanied that particular event. Sage Blair eventually ran away, and thanks to someone, I guess we could call it a so-called trans ally, she ended up as a rape victim and a sex slave. Could this have been prevented if the school board had not hidden that gender dysphoria from the parents? We'll never know, will we? But one thing is certain, if that woman, if that young woman, Sage Blair, had died, we know who would have paid for the funeral, don't we? Now, whether a parent affirms their child's gender dysphoria or not, five school board members support their human right to make that decision, that decision to weigh in on matters affecting the child's safety and mental health to include gender dysphoria. However, six members do not. Instead, those members seem to feel that they know better than parents what is right for their homes, their families, and their children. But is that so? Or should those six members set aside
Thirty seconds.
...personal bias and work with all parents to promote a safer learning environment for all in school? To those six members, I would say this: Stop denying parents their human rights. Stop dragging your feet. Adopt the 2023 model policies without further delay.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, and then Dan Chang.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Gonzalez, and I've lost count of how many meetings I've attended thus far, and I'm not sure how many speeches I've written over the past year regarding the governor's model policies, though I'm sure it's over a dozen.
Excuse me, can you?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sometimes I wonder if my voice is still relevant. I'm not a Virginia Beach City Public School student anymore. I'm 18. I'm in college. I'm in college. It would be easy for me to brush this topic off because it doesn't directly affect me anymore. Legally, I can sign my own field trip forms and sign up for extracurriculars without ever having to tell my parents. They aren't even allowed to see my grades anymore unless I say so. But being an adult doesn't mean I've forgotten what it was like to be a kid. I still am one compared to some of the other adults in this room. I remember being a frightened kid growing up. I went to great lengths to hide a lot of myself from my parents, and that was born not out of a sense of rebellion or sneakiness, but because I was scared, and understandably so. I had a tumultuous home life, and for most of my childhood, school was where I went to feel safe. School was a place of stability, a place where I could be authentic without fear, and I am not trans. Proponents of these policies argue that we assume all parents of trans students to be abusive, and thus we want to exclude them from their child's education completely. They argue that merely implying that something that is so frequently looked down upon and even outright hated as being trans, something that is so personal and otherwise treated as an especially sensitive and private thing, being revealed against a child's will to their parents could result in negative repercussions, is the same as writing all parents off as abusive. It is not. There are times where it is in a student's best interest for schools to discuss their gender identity with their families, particularly at the elementary school level, but what these policies miss is if it's in the student's best interest. As students get older and are given more rights and legal freedoms, such as the ability to seek out counseling, consent to medical treatment, get a job, drive a car, or even apply for emancipation, this violation of their privacy becomes even more egregious. These policies will not succeed in facilitating private positive relationships between parents and their children, but will only ensure students go to extra lengths to prevent their identity from being outed. Regardless of whether a parent is good or bad, loving or not, is it appropriate for schools to acquire their staff to blatantly disregard the will of their students and compromise their confidentiality? Is that a task teachers and counselors are ready to shoulder? There are ways to keep parents informed that don't require schools to violate their students' safety and autonomy. I am not trans, but you don't have to be to understand why transgender students often hesitate to come out to their parents and to understand why schools play such a crucial role for those with unsafe home lives. I urge this board to establish policies that act in the best interest of students rather than treating them all with the same broad procedure. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang.
Nice to see you, Mrs. Riggs here tonight. I am taking a different tack tonight. Usually, I'm defending parental rights. I think this school division's staff is awesome. I think they will do anything that you all ask them to do. They're out there for the parents. They're out there for the kids. I think, I was watching, I looked at the package sent, and I think Dr. Robertson, Mr. Jamison, Ms. Lanetti, and the staff put together a very, very thorough package identifying where they can make changes to the 2023 model policy, implement the 2023 model policy. It was very thorough. I was at home, and I watched the workshop. I was totally appalled. I think you all know my background as a naval officer. I had command of a ship. And one of the things we do in the Navy is success rides on your crew. You take care of your crew. You assist them. This crew that you have put together a great package. I was so appalled by the lack of preparation by this school board. Certain members feel they need to be spoon-fed. You look at the questions asked, they could have been asked, if you looked through the package, asked the questions before the meeting, this staff would answer it. You wouldn't have to waste the time of them. They're going to be here late, not because of what they did, but because of lack of preparation, and I'll say incompetence, on this school board. The leadership, they're going to be here late, and they're going to have to come to work at the same time tomorrow. I think you all need to consider what they do for you. These idle thank-yous and all this other stuff, "You do a great job." Do it by your actions. They're going to be here. I know you're going to have the workshop after. I think you ended up on page two of nine. So you've got seven more pages of discussion that's going to be hours and hours. So they're not going to go home till, I guess, whenever you decide to go home. Then they're going to have to answer all your questions and have them ready tomorrow. So my plug is to support Dr. Robertson and this school division staff. They deserve it. They do a great job. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to do a time check.
We're going to take one more.
Okay, our next speaker will be Paula Chang.
Thank you for letting me come before eight. Each member of this school board is an elected public servant sworn to uphold the constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And these documents are clear regarding the unalienable, God-given, not government-granted rights for parents over their children. Thus, you should have already adopted in full the Youngkin DOD 2023 model policies, which recognizes parental rights. The Youngkin policies removed the grievous Northam VDOE policies, which weakened parental rights, created chaos in the schools, and we all remember it, and strengthened government control, all with intent. Yet during the last year, this board has given more recognition and value to and taken more advice from children with still-developing minds and without the degree of life experience and responsibility to be giving sound advice to adults. At the same time, this board dismissed and minimized the importance of parents and citizens who do understand adult responsibility and do provide for others. Franklin, Riggs, Anderson, Owens, Martin, and Melnick proved this when they approved the Owens-Franklin transgender resolution, which they thought to be very important. Yet Franklin, Riggs, Anderson, Owens, Martin, and Melnick did not seem so important, find so important, and failed to vote for the Youngkin policies at the last meeting claiming that there was still quote-unquote "work" to do. I call false flag on that. I call excuses. I attended a policy review committee meeting many, many weeks ago where Dr. Robertson and Dr. Jamison stated they'd completed regulation changes needed to be in compliance with the Youngkin policies. They were ready to go. Yet today in the workshop, after board members claimed there was so much work to do, regulation changes presented presumably appeared to be largely what Dr. Robertson's referenced from weeks earlier. There were so many questions today by members indicating a lack of preparation, to get actually to my husband's point. Some questions were so basic and some so inanely pseudo-intellectual and down the rabbit hole that you were blown away. And I must ask, actually to his point, if you consider your employees when you get ready for these meetings, are you prepared? Was there no substantiative work done by members on these policies when there's work to do beyond political posturing behind the scenes to slow down its passage? Had you really wanted this passed, you would have, in truth, already have had multiple special PRC meetings, Ms. Owens, as you're the new chair, and multiple board meetings, Mrs. Riggs, to get, to plow through the work and get it done. But that was not.
Thirty seconds.
So I have a suggestion. Based on what I've seen from people speaking at meetings, give to Dr. Jamison. Help have him design it for you, and then you can review it. And then would three of you oath-taking board members who work for us and who work for parents, please call a special meeting and get these policies passed? Thank you.
Okay, we are now on item 12, which is information. Starting with legislative update, Stacy Martin, one of our school board members, the legislative committee chair, and Joel Andrews Kemper Consulting Company.
Joel is here.
He's here. Oh, okay, I thought it was going to be virtual. Welcome, Joel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, Madam Chair, dive right in? Certainly, I know you have a.
Dive right in.
All right, I know you have a lot to do, so I'm going to be relatively brief in my comments. I think when I was before you at the end of February, maybe beginning of March, I said we had just come out of session, we had a skinny budget. As you recall, we were waiting for a big budget, and I said, "Hold on, it's not going to be that much longer. We got to get through the primaries." And primaries came, primaries went, June came, June went. We still had no budget. July came and July went, and we still had no budget, as you know. But rest assured, we finally have a budget that the General Assembly actually just passed this past week, and barring any changes from the governor, which, to be honest, I don't expect, I think we will probably see that signed and implemented right away. And just as a reminder, we're in the middle of the biennial budget in Virginia, so because we have actually already started the current biennial, current year, fiscal year, on July 1. As soon as the governor signs the budget, it will go into effect. So there will no be waiting period. There's a couple of exceptions to that where there's dates that are pushed out. Well, I'll highlight a couple of those things, but for the most part, everything we see will go into effect on, as soon as it is signed. Okay, there we go. So I'm just going to highlight a few things, then I'm going to spend a couple of minutes talking about kind of what we're seeing on the horizon. And so what I've tried to do on this slide is show you kind of where we started with the introduced budget on some of the big things we were working on, what was proposed in the House budget back in, during the regular session, Senate budget, and then kind of what came out of this latest budget that was passed last week. What I've not included is any of the skinny budget items on this slide, just because it'll get too complicated. But the big picture is, this is about $645 million into K-12, more than what was in the skinny budget. So if you add the additional $132 million, you know, a pretty significant increase for K-12. As you, we've been talking about for several years on the support cap, we've seen progress over that. We've seen additional progress with this budget, another $152 million to continue to chip away at that support cap, really moving it from 21 support positions per thousand ADM to 24. This is about half of what the Senate had proposed in their budget, so this is about 50% of what they had. We also saw additional teacher salary increases. This is something that was in both the House and the Senate budget. The effective date, though, is January 1. So this is one of those instances where it will go into effect on January 1. So just keep that in mind. There's also some language in there that, to be perfectly candid, is convoluted, and I haven't gotten complete clarity on how it's supposed to work. But there's a, you know, as always with salary increases, you know, you have to reach certain benchmark metrics before you can pull down the state funds. There's a, because they already have the 5% in there, and this is a 2% in addition to the 5%, there's a few caveats, but it's pretty much 2% on top of the 5%. We did not see any additional funding for the specialized supports. We did not see any additional funding in this budget for a lot of those smaller items that we might be focused on, with a couple of exceptions here and there. But what the General Assembly opted to do instead is take a really big chunk of money and put it into one-time flexible funding. This is about $418 million. And that is supposed to go towards all types of things, from implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, which they also gave you a little bit of money for, for, you know, money for additional supports, money for pandemic-related tutoring. All of those types of things can come out of this $418 million. It is divided up in kind of an interesting way where they distribute it based upon not only ADM, but also weighted towards LCI. So school divisions with a low LCI and a high student population obviously will benefit the most. School divisions with a slow student population but maybe a high LCI would get a smaller share of that. And that was designed to try to target some of these dollars towards, you know, the most at-risk populations. That was what that was designed for. The money can be spent through 2026, and along that line, there's a few reporting periods. So you'll have to check in with Department of Education on how those dollars are being spent. But I'm sure there will be a lot more guidance coming out of DOE as those dollars begin to come out over, you know, probably be a few months now. So that was, those are the really big items. As you can see, obviously, no additional money for capital. I know that's something that we've been talking about for a couple of years. And there was a few small things like security grants that they put additional money in, but these were really the primary places where they put most of the money. And what we saw with this budget really across the board, not just in K-12, but, you know, putting big chunks of money in a number of pockets as opposed to doing what they often do, which is maybe smaller chunks where they have more time to think about policies and things like that. So they just didn't go into that much detail during this budget process. So I'll pause there to see if there's any questions, then I might look towards what we're seeing in the horizon.
Ms. Melnick.
So back to the teacher salary, you use the words convoluted and caveat. So are you talking about a local match?
No, not necessarily, not a, I mean, those types of things are always in place, so all those types. But there's always language in the budget around teacher salaries that say you have to do X amount before you can draw down the state share. So they might say if it's, you know, varying over the years, but sometimes they'll say, "Okay, we're going to give you a 3% raise. In order to draw down a 3% raise, you have to do at least a 1.5% raise," which means if you did a 1% raise, you would not be eligible for any of the state funds. Because of the 5% that was already in place, the existing budget, and they're doing 2% on top of that, there's a lot of language that sort of directs how the money is supposed to flow between the 5% and the 2%. And you will have to do obviously at least 5% in order to get the additional 2%, but there's some flexibility over how you give raises over the biennium. So if you did it two years in a row, I think you can draw down some of those funds, but we just haven't gotten a lot of honestly clarity of the specifics on that, and the language is a little odd. And I've, you know, talked to a few of my colleagues asking the same question, and we've all sort of scratched our head on that, too. But I think we're, at this point, really waiting for that additional guidance from DOE so we have a better sense of what that really means. But, you know, if you're doing 5% and then anything over the 5%, I think you'll be able to draw down on this, too.
Okay, so you're expecting more clarity.
I'm expecting more clarity.
So it's un-odd?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so looking ahead, and obviously, the big elephant in the room in Virginia is, you know, waiting for the elections. We are past Labor Day, and that makes election season sort of come alive here in Virginia. So seeing a lot more activity on that, and, you know, that will really decide a lot of the direction come January, you know, with all 140 members of the General Assembly up for reelection, redistricting, we've been talking about that several times now, so I know you're familiar with that. That's going to really set the pace. However, in the meantime, we've seen a couple of reports come out that I think will be, regardless of what happens with the elections, will be impacting some of the discussion happening in Richmond come January. One of the big ones was the Joint Legislative Auto Review Commission. Earlier this summer, released their report on K-12 funding with lots of recommendations. It's a very long report. And they sort of call into question a lot of different things about how K-12 funding is done, everything from, you know, some of the basic formulas to, you know, some of the assumptions. One of the interesting things that came out of it, though, was that they did find that the LCI is actually oddly enough a pretty good benchmark for local ability to pay. What was a little bit funny at the, in the current budget, because the General Assembly received these recommendations from J-Larke as they were negotiating the budget, they weren't really sure what to do with them. And so now they've set up a work group to look at the recommendations from J-Larke and report back next November of '24. So you would say it is a study to study a study, I think, something like that. So that might be the most government thing we've done, where we're studying our own study. But we would expect to see this as part of the discussion heading into the next biennial budget and certainly beyond that. This morning, I was in Richmond because J-Larke released a second K-12 report on teacher pipeline. As we all know, and not unique to Virginia Beach or anywhere else, everyone is struggling to get teachers in the classroom. J-Larke has spent the last year or so studying that. A couple of those findings are, you know, they sort of point to traditional pathways as well, the more expensive route tends to produce the highest-quality teachers from what they can tell. We need a lot more data, is also what they decided, like, we don't have enough data out there to really decide what some of the issues are. We do have a lot of survey back to why teachers lead the profession, but there's a lot more data that we need to make some really policy decisions about moving forward on teacher pipeline. I think this is going to be a significant discussion this coming General Assembly, you know, with salary increases in place that we've seen, it's now going to look You know, with salary increases in place that we've seen, it's now going to look more towards the policy. And I think we're going to see, you know, what can we do to increase the pipeline? What can we do apart from salary increases to keep teachers in the profession? Those are going to be the things that the General Assembly is going to really start grappling with, I believe, in 2024. And then the last thing I want to point to is the School Health Advisory Committee. This was actually a group that we helped set up a number of years ago through legislation. It creates a joint committee made up of House and Senate members to look at some of the burdens that are put on school divisions around any type of school health issues. And we see things from concussion management, you know, all those unfunded mandates. Part of their charge is going to be looking at those things. So they will have their first meeting on September 18th of next week. And then we'll, you know, it'll be a while before they start getting recommendations, but it'll be good that they're finally getting up and running. So I will, oh, went too far. I'll pause there, and like I said, it was going to be a brief update, but happy to answer any other questions.
Ms. Martin.
Mr. Andrews, you mentioned that the J-LARC work group on funding will come up with recommendations November of 2024. So that would be January 25, potential changes to the biennium, the second year, correct?
Correct. And so I think what, that work group will not have any recommendations for the development of the biennial budget that we will work on this session. They will probably have recommendations to amend the biennial budget next session, and then beyond that. But I would expect that regardless, we will see elements of that J-LARC report come into the General Assembly discussion and the budget development process during this upcoming session, even though those work group recommendations won't be due for another year.
Okay, so we need to remain nimble throughout these next couple of sessions to see what gets sort of put in place beforehand and then what comes out of the work group.
That, that's correct. And the work, the J-LARC report, and I could root through it and tell you the exact number, but basically, their recommendations came up to about $5 billion in new K-12 funding. Some of that, you know, J-LARC is always looking backwards too, so keep that in mind. They don't necessarily incorporate some of the recent investments in K-12. So there's been a lot of kind of sorting that out of where do we actually stand today versus where do we stand when J-LARC was doing their, their actual study process? So that will be part of the discussion too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, we appreciate you coming.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now on 12B Budget Calendar and Revenue Sharing Formula Review. Welcome, Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chairwoman Weem, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. This evening, I'm presenting the Budget Calendar for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 School Operating Budget, and the Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 through 2029, 2030 Capital Improvement Program. The calendar contains the specific dates and timeframes for the key components and activities of the budget development process. It is an important guide for administration and the school board regarding the schedule and the events in the budget process, which will ultimately result in an approval of a proposed budget. I will just point out several of the key dates on the calendar. Tentatively, on November 21st, we will be joining the city budget staff in presenting a five-year forecast and a joint briefing to the school board and city council. December 12th is going to be our first public hearing on the budget to solicit stakeholder input for consideration of priorities to focus on in the budget development process. There will be no document available at that time. This is a preliminary public hearing, just so to hear ideas and themes of what the public would like to see addressed in the budget for Fiscal Year 2024, '25, and the, and/or the Six-Year Capital Improvement Program. We do recognize that this date does start to bump up against the holidays, but just a reminder that the governor typically releases the estimate for state revenue the third week of December, and so we make an effort to coordinate around that release. During the latter part of January, will we be sharing the recommended School Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program with the superintendent and the PPMC. February 6th will be a special school board meeting where we will be presenting the superintendent's estimate of needs and the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan. Every Tuesday after February 6th, the school board will have a budget workshop. And on March 5th, at your discretion, you will have another workshop, or you also on this day are scheduled to approve the Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. We will then send the approved budget to the city. We will have a presentation to city council sometime in April. That date is yet to be determined, and by state code, city council must approve the budget by May 15th. So that concludes the budget calendar presentation. I do want to give you an opportunity to comment on any additional information any of you would like to see related to the budget or the budget process on dates other than are listed on this calendar. We did receive some feedback on the last budget development process, where there was an interest in possibly receiving additional information or education on the budget maybe earlier on, so that when the board is ready to approve the budget, that there was a level of comfort on what was being approved. Those of you who've been on the board for, for a little bit, they know we move pretty fast once the governor releases his state revenue. So sometimes if there's anything that we can do ahead of schedule that would help educate you or help you understand our process, or like you would like to see more of, please let us know. Whether that is in any form of additional budget workshops, or if that's something we could take to the PPMC for full dissemination to the board by those committee members, or any additional information through documentation that would be helpful. We'll be glad to, to take any comments or suggestions that you have. We certainly want to be there to support you. And so with that, I will open this up to any questions that the board may have.
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Pate, I had listened to a city council workshop a few months ago where they had discussed revisiting their revenue share formula. They deferred that for a year, but that would impact this budget development that's in this calendar, is that correct?
So the next presentation I'm going to give you is going to be on the revenue sharing formula. What they did at city council was present basically some information I'm going to present to you next after we get through this piece. And then it has not been fully decided whether that will be extended. We expressed interest in that. We wanted to present information to the board, get direction from the board on how they would like to proceed and what our recommendation is. And then certainly we'll make those, proceed in that direction as the board wishes.
Okay, so the revenue share formula could still change?
It could still change.
Okay, thank you.
That is, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think it would be helpful. I feel like when we have that first public hearing, we, no one shows up, and we don't get any feedback. But I think it's because maybe the time of the year that it is, and people just don't know about it. Would it be possible to maybe send an alert now, or an alert message out to the community somehow, through some sort of process, alerting them that we are going to be entering budget season and that we really want to hear from the public what their priorities are in education? Just to bring some awareness around it, maybe provide our email address and link to the meetings? Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson, thank you. Oh, and then the other thing that we received, I think it was toward, but it was toward the end of the budget process last year, was kind of a line item report with kind of some deeper level, like line items of spending that I found very, very helpful. If we could get that earlier on in the process this year, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, Ms. Anderson.
I'm, I'm concerned about the fact that the revenue sharing formula is being debated with city council at this time.
I'm not sure that it's being debated at this time. Right now, when they presented in workshop, it was some historical history. I think comments from city council that they, they seemed to be favorable with extending it. And again, when I do this presentation, I will tell you at the end, the recommendation is going to be that administration, and I'll give you the reasons why we think we should extend it for another year. It does expire June 2024. We are going to recommend that it go through June 2025 for some reasons we'll, I'll outlay in the presentation. So there's been no formal debate. There's been no conversation with city staff at this time. We communicated to city that we needed to take this to the board, and we needed to make sure that everyone was made aware of the situation and the information, and see what direction they wanted to go in based on where we are at this time. So there's really been no, no debate, no discussion at all at this point.
Well, they are very aware that it's coming up. And several members have contacted me concerning what I hope to see happen, wanting to know, you know, my opinion on certain things. So anyway, I'm anxious to hear what you, what you're going to give us.
Are there, are there any more questions on her budget presentation? That's what we're taking right now, please. Okay, now, we're going to listen, we're going to let her give this report of the revenue sharing formula, and then we can ask questions afterwards. Dr. Robertson, did you have a question? Is that what you want, okay, thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and transition to the presentation on the revenue sharing policy, the importance of this revenue sharing formula, and the reason we're bringing the topic up to you today. The current revenue sharing formula, as I said, is set to expire on June 30th, 2024. And therefore, as we just discussed, we need to decide if we want to extend the current revenue sharing formula for another year or make changes to the formula as we go into the budget development cycle for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Included in this presentation, I'm going to provide a quick overview of school funding and the revenue sources that support our operations, and the revenue source, and the relationship between the city and the school division, historical overview in terms of revenue sharing formula over many years it has been in existence, highlights of the existing formula, as well as a benchmark of other localities that utilize a revenue sharing formula in their operations. And then at the end of conclusion, provide you with our recommendation, which I've shared with you, and seek direction from the board and get any feedback or on guidance how you would like us to proceed. On this side, we are providing you some budget basic information. As a Dillon Rule state, the framework of the relationship between the city and the schools is defined within state code. This includes the fact that the taxing authority with, remains with the governing body, and in that case, it's the city. The state does lay out guidelines that require the city to maintain a certain minimum standards of quality and the related funding for those standards, commonly referred to as SOQ. As a division under Virginia statute, the superintendent works with the budget staff to develop a budget that is presented to the school board review and approval, and then presented to city council for review and approval. Spending authority is legally granted to the school division through the appropriation of funds by the city. The appropriation is the maximum amount that the division can spend during the fiscal year. This appropriation can be granted as a lump sum appropriation, which is what we currently operate under, or funds can be appropriated categorically by instruction, admin attendance and health, pupil transportation, operation and maintenance, technology, and debt service. Once the funds have been appropriated to the school division, there is limited ability for the local governing body to have influence over the prioritization or use of those funds once the school division's budget is adopted. The control in place by state code states the school board is not permitted to expend in any fiscal year any sum of money in excess of the funds appropriated by the governing body. Any member of a school board or any division superintendent or other school officer violating this provision shall be guilty of malfeasance in office. And just to provide you some context, back in 1996, this did happen in our division. The division exceeded its appropriation authority at the end of the fiscal year by approximately $12 million, resulting in a grand jury being called, which in turn led to seven resignations of elected officials. I bring this up because it's important to understand the impact this event had on the school division and how it shaped the school division's operations to this day. The school division uses several financial controls that are in place to prevent this from ever happening again. It also tends to make us a little more conservative in the utilization of funds, which is the main reason we have reversion funds at the end of the fiscal year. State code does not allow the school division's operating budget to maintain a fund balance. Since schools are not allowed to have a fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, any unused funds are to revert back to the governing body. This is the beginning of the reversion process, where the school division will request these remaining one-time funds to be re-appropriated in the following fiscal year to support services and/or projects in an approved resolution. This next slide shows historically notable reference points related to the school funding formula. Back in 1994, the school board became elected officials. In between this point in time and when the first revenue sharing formula was adopted and utilized in the development of the fiscal year '97, '98 operating budget, apparently there were several years of pretty contentious budget battles that were occurring, and both elected bodies had concerns and complaints. It was very difficult to do long-term, sustainable planning with resource needs, which each had their own priorities, and the need to draw down a finite amount of resources. Ultimately, a policy was put in place to establish the first revenue sharing formula, which the schools began utilizing in fiscal year 1997, '98. This allowed the school division to prioritize their needs, whether it be in the operating budget or the CIP, and it provided the flexibility to use those funds for the purposes they identified. The policy remained pretty much unchanged for a number of years through the 2000s, with some adjustments up and down to account for changes in revenue sources or state code changes. During the Great Recession around 2010, the existing formula kind of came into question as the school division was experiencing revenue reductions from both the city and the state. Local revenue loss was being experienced by the city, and the state was also reducing its contribution for schools and eliminating things such as state construction funding and implementing support caps on positions. So in the development of the fiscal year 2012, '13 budget, a revenue sharing formula was not used to allocate resources, but instead it was more of a needs-based budget proposed or submitted by the school division. After a thorough review, city council authorized a tax increase of which four cents was dedicated to the school division to help provide continuity in services and not allow the reduction in revenues to negatively impact the school division. At the direction of city council and school board, staff were to get together and revise the revenue sharing formula. In 2013, '14, a new formula was developed. A couple of components of that formula policy was the inclusion of a review by or an extend-by date that was identified to ensure the policy did not become stale over time. Another important component at that point in time was the base calculation took into account the standards of quality or state minimum level funding to be provided to schools per state code. This policy remained in effect for several years. The most recent formula we have, was revised in 2019, '20. An important component in this revision is that the standards of quality component was removed due to the determination that its inclusion was actually counterproductive. The SOQ figure usually was available late in the budget development process, and it could fluctuate quite a bit between any given year to where during the February-March timeframe, the SOQ figure would be released, and there could be as much as a $10 million swing. And this would need to be reconciled fairly late in the budget development process. So just to go over some high-level talking points about the current formula that is currently in place, local funding is shared with schools and allocated in a manner that allows schools to establish their existing priorities or place funding towards what their priorities are, whether it's the operating budget, the CIP is a mean of, means of financing, or PEGO, or to support debt service. There are 13 revenue sources that the city and school division share. These revenue sources are deemed to be the largest and least volatile revenue sources. You can see examples of them on the first bullet of this slide. The 13 revenue sources are currently split with 46.75% provided to the school division and 53.25% retained by the city. If these revenue sources over or underperform in any given fiscal year, the city and schools share the increases or decreases accordingly. It is important to note that this is not just a budget revenue allocation. It is also an actual calculation of revenues in these categories received at the end of the fiscal year. There is a true-up or a reconciliation, where the actual revenues received for these revenue sources are reconciled to what is budgeted, and then any over or under according to our percentage is communicated to the division. In order to request additional funding above the current revenue sharing formula, the school division is required to make a formal action and written request to city council in terms of the shortfall that has been identified and what is needed to close that shortfall, whether it is through the form of a tax increase or additional revenue to support it. And as you know, their existing policy does, policy does have a formal layout as to the process the school division follows to make the request for reappropriation of reversion funds. to make the request for reappropriation of reversion funds in the following fiscal year. So after 25 years of implementation of the revenue sharing formula, there are certainly been some benefits and challenges that have been seen over the years. It is in fact a predictable tool for resource planning and allocation to put towards prioritization and needs. It does provide the flexibility for both the city and the school division in terms of long-term planning purposes. It allows the city a great deal of transparency to be able to point to a number and identify the amount of funding that is provided to the school divisions to support their operations. Over time, it has reduced the friction between the city council and school board in the budget deliberation process, and then again, it allows the city and school division to share in the economic growth and declines of the local economy. Challenges include the limited amount of flexibility when an emergency need arises. A good example of this was at the beginning of the pandemic, when city council wanted to make a decision to provide a meals tax holiday. This just required an extra step that needed to be considered and communicated in terms of the impact on the school division through the existence of the revenue sharing formula. The current formula does not account for changes in state or federal funding, nor does it account for changes in the demand for services, such as changes in student enrollment or unfunded mandates. This next slide is a benchmark comparison of some other localities and counties that utilize a revenue sharing formula. The chart takes a look at the cities of Hampton, Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Roanoke, as well as the counties of Prince George, Roanoke, and Arlington. You can see in the chart at the top, the period of time when these localities developed a revenue sharing formula between themselves and their respective school districts. The check marks in the table denote that the respective revenue sharing formula included the particular component that is listed on the left-hand side. For example, the first row includes local tax revenues. The next one removes dedicated revenues. The funding formula supported the capital program in some shape or form, and they all have components that include a request for additional funding. As you get lower down in the table, you start to see some inconsistencies. For the ADM population inclusion, the majority of the localities do not include this factor. Prince George and Roanoke counties have it as part of their overall calculation. They take into account a five-year and a three-year rolling average respectively of student enrollment to determine the level of need. In the second to the last row, on adjusting for other funding, such as state or federal, you see the majority do not include this component in their calculation, and two of them plan to revisit this. The last line of the table indicates that for all the localities compared, the formula does exceed the minimum standards of quality state requirement. So I realize this is a lot of information at one time. Certainly felt it was important to share this historical context and comparison information. So our recommendation to the board, as I shared with you, is to extend the current revenue sharing formula through June 30th, 2025, based on the reasons outlined in this slide. As a school board, you are in active nationwide search for a new superintendent. Extending the policy for a year will allow the new superintendent to be involved in future revenue sharing formula negotiations. In addition, there are other senior leadership position changes that have occurred, which impact operations. An extension would ensure stability and continuity in moving through the upcoming budget development cycle. There are four relatively new school board members who began serving on the board January 1st of this year. Extending the policy for a year will allow them to participate in a complete budget cycle and gain additional information of the division's financial history, budgeting practices, and existing budget proposals, which are crucial to ensure their effective participation in the decision-making process and the impact of the policy. And finally, as you know, the division is currently in an interim PPA agreement to design three new schools. Extending the policy for a year will allow the division to complete this process and make the final determination if a funding plan is feasible. So I thank you for your time this evening, and I'll be glad to address any questions you have.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I totally agree that we need to extend this, the current formula, the way it's written. Of course, I guess that would still have to be approved by city council.
It does. And in the conversations we've had, we've, again, I've spoken with city staff, and as we shared that we would be bringing this to the board for direction. They have said if that is the direction that school board wishes to go in, we will have a letter drafted from Dr. Robertson to the city manager, making that request and explaining the full board's approval, and we'll go from there.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of doing that, especially with all the three things that you've noted here. They're very important, and especially the fact that, you know, we may or may not have a new superintendent within the next year, and the fact that we do have four new school board members would give them each opportunity to get through. All these things are very important, and I agree wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
I agree with Ms. Anderson. I think what we learned from Mr. Andrews in terms of this J-Lark study that will also affect, you know, how things look in 2025. I did have a question, though. On slide four, you list the revenue streams, real estate, personal property, general sales tax, utility, restaurant, telephone. Are those all the same revenue streams that are used to calculate the LCI?
No, the LCI, there's several other factors that go in calculating the LCI.
Okay, so some of these revenue streams may not be included in LCI.
Correct.
And if they grow, it doesn't count against us. Okay, thank you.
You indicated that there are 13 streams, and I do have a note of where those are somewhere, but could you provide those to us?
I can.
The 13 streams that we do utilize as part of the revenue sharing formula?
Certainly can. I'll get them to you.
Thank you.
I mean, I have them written here, but I'll put them in writing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Ms. Brown.
So forgive me for asking, because like you mentioned, I haven't been here at the beginning of a budget cycle. Is this something we're going to have to vote on, or is this just informational?
So at this point, I think it's on the consent agenda for September 26th. It's not going for action, so it's just trying to get recommendation if that's the direction you would like us to go in. And again, if that's true, the direction, then we'll do the letter from Dr. Robertson to the city manager. If we actually revise this policy, it does probably go through a formal action. It is signed off by superintendent, city manager, mayor, so that gets written. So that'll be a much more formal process.
Okay. And I know you went through a lot of information here on the timeline. But do we ordinarily vote to renew the revenue sharing formula?
Usually, for my experience, it's done over a period of time, sort of like for five years. And so this is probably the first time I've experienced that we're just going to extend it for a year. But normally, we do it for a period of time, and we might review it on an annual basis, but typically don't change it. We typically let it just stand unless there's some significant changes. So that way, we just don't constantly have to reinvent the wheel every year. So usually, when we start to do the changes in it, after, when we do make that decision to do that, we'll probably recommend that you do that for a period of time. We certainly will take a look at it and have any discussions. But it can go for up to three to five years, and then before we actually go back and reevaluate.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson.
Yeah, so I will tell you that there's support at the highest levels of the city to extend this for one year. And I think it'll be particularly interesting for all the board members to go through a deep dive into the revenue sharing formula discussion. And it's going to take some time, because you're going to want to go through all the various revenue streams. And there's likely to be some suggestions around adjustments, and you need time to really lean in and understand what those adjustments mean from a dollar standpoint. So Ms. Martin's question's a good question. Which ones are tied to the LCI? Which ones are not? Which ones are, you can pretty much have a good prediction each year what it's going to be. And so, again, I just wanted you to know that the highest levels of the city have reached out to me and indicated they support.
And they've reached out to me, too. So they're in support of it, but they did reach out to me as well, so. Ms. Owens.
And my question is actually in regards to the budget calendar. I just wanted to clarify, the November 21st five-year forecast date. I know originally, we were holding a different date. Is this the date that it changed to? Because I had like the 15th in my.
So I think the date that got put out during the retreat was from our very preliminary draft, the budget calendar, based on the previous year's. I think the previous year was like the 15th. But when the city narrowed it down, it ended up being on the 21st.
And do we have a time yet, or is that still?
I do not have a time, and as soon as we have that available, we'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Now we are on the C, data allowance for school board members. Basically, we talked about this in workshop at the last meeting. And this is for the use of your data at your home to give you an allowance towards it. We already have the allowance for our phones, which I think is $100 a month. And this would be the same, $100 a month. You can choose to take that allowance, or you can choose not to. That's your decision. We have discussed other ways. We've discussed in the past, different people have talked with me about, why don't we just go ahead and look at the salary the school board is making? But at this point, there's rules about that, and there are certain times you can do it, and certain times you can't. Ms. Lynetti, do you have that, so everybody will understand why we're doing allowance?
I don't have it in front of me, but you have to allow, once you vote to do an increase in the salary, you have to allow an intervening election during election to happen so that the incoming elected officials can make a decision to change it. So you really have to plan your time period appropriately to know when it will go into effect. So that's why we always mention to you, certain times in the year, you need to think about it, depending when you're going to do it, if you want to do it, plan appropriately for it so you know when to budget for it, because it may not go into effect. So that's why we talked about it. So usually about this time of year, we always mention that to you. Think about, if you've got an election coming up, do you want to budget for it?
So we could not have done it now, but I think for the upcoming budget, I think it's in that time allotted. I think it's between that. I mean, you can let us know afterwards, but I just.
Yeah, I think correctly, you would have to, you could do it this time of year. I don't think it'd go into effect until January 1, well, or whenever the next. So you could plan for it, but technically, you probably could put it in the next fiscal year.
That's what I'm saying, the next, yes.
You have plenty of time to do it, it just wouldn't be in effect.
Right. Okay, so because people were asking me, why don't we just look at, because we are, I think, we make the less amount of any school board in the Hampton Roads area, and we are the largest. So it's time to be looking at this. It's been at this point for, I don't even know how many years. I mean. Since '94.
You're allowed to go up to what your legislative body is, so that's your choices, where you would be allowed to do anything in that range, so you have that flexibility.
Yes, so, yes, Ms. Manning.
So Madam Chair, I'm not opposed to the idea of the allowance. But when we were talking about it in the workshop, I thought it was going to be going to PRC, because that's what we did the last time. The last time, it was a bylaw change, and we have a bylaw that governs this. It's bylaw 1-14. And it's written in here specifically about the communications allowance. So I just believe that the proper way to do this would be, I mean, it doesn't have to go back to PRC, but I think that it needs to be a bylaw change written into 1-14, because we already addressed the communication allowance in this. So my request is that if we're going to do it, we do it the right way and put it in that bylaw. And then my second, if I may. I mean, I agree, the salary is low, and I think it may deter some people from running for the office. And I'm not opposed to us considering a salary increase. I prefer a salary increase rather than a communications allowance, because I think it's more transparent to the public. It would not, the code of Virginia that governs this is 22.1-32, if anyone wants to take a look at it. So we would be able to adopt it prior to December 31st of this year. We would be able to adopt it. It wouldn't go into effect until January 1, 2025. So I mean, I would also ask the PRC to look at this as well. But my ask is that this be done through a bylaw, rather than just us saying it's going to happen. Thank you.
Did you find it?
It's not required that it go through the bylaw. You do have the compensation for the communication. It's in there, and it talks at your expense. It does nothing in your bylaws that it has to go through there, but that is where you put the communication allowance.
But, you know, we can do that and ask PRC to look at it. Actually, I would say this coming up time, since we've already talked about it. And add it to your agenda, please. So if you can amend your agenda. I think your meeting is this Thursday. Add the agenda to include this, so you can add it to the bylaw. And then we can bring it back. I guess, do we need to bring it back? I don't think discussions, since we've already discussed it.
Well, if it's PRC, it'll come on information.
But we can also ask to amend that one, to put it on action as well, that particular one.
I'd put it on for information if PRC recommends.
Yeah, both of them.
And then just make a decision.
Ms. Owens. Oh, sorry, Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I actually have a question for Ms. Lynetti. That's okay. So if we were as a body to vote on a salary change right now, that would go into effect January 1, 2025. Is that correct?
Yep.
I don't have the statute in front of me, but if I'm correct, the wording in the statute is you have to have an intervening general election. So that for you, right now, unless something very unusual happened, would be next Jan, not this January, the following January would be. And that would allow the incoming new body to make a different decision if they wanted to, but it would start January afterwards.
And if this data allowance was voted on today, when would that go into effect?
Whatever you decided.
Yeah, we had talked about it, starting in October.
You know, so initially, when I thought about it, it didn't really seem like a big deal to me to do the data allowance, but as I got to thinking about it, and I know, and just for the general public, it's $12,000 a year that our salary is. But it's actually $13,200 because of the communications allowance, if you opt into it. If we add another $100 a month, that is going to be $14,400. From the public perspective, I'm concerned about giving an increase that doesn't show clearly is an increase. And so I have some heartburn about it. I understand if people want to support the data allowance, but I won't be able to in this particular format. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, I mean, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. In terms of the PRC meeting, certainly we can add this on for this week and discuss how it looks in the bylaw. I am looking forward to also discussing the board's salary in that context. And I'm very excited to hear that board members are now open to having that discussion, because when I have asked previously, so that we could have that discussion in PRC, I was told by many of the board members that they would not support that discussion. So I'm eager to move forward. It's not something that necessarily benefits this board. It is for future boards. And the way our salary situation is set up right now, it is restrictive to having others be able to participate on the board. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
So I was the one who suggested that we do this. And the reason is because of the fact that our salaries are so low to begin with. But the main reason is, if you think about it, I cannot be an effective school board member if I don't have the internet in my own home. I mean, think about it, when your internet goes out accidentally, and you're like, oh. and you're like, oh, you can't get on anything, you know? It's like, wow. So this is very much needed and necessary right now because of the fact that having the internet allows you to look at the upcoming agenda, to look at our policies, to, to receive emails from our constituents, et cetera. And yes, I've been on the board now for over 10 years without this allowance. But you know, I, I just feel it's the fair thing to do. Even if we voted tonight to increase our salary, you know, it won't go into effect until January 2025. And I just think that's too long to wait. I do believe that this is a necessary increase. And I wouldn't have any trouble at all explaining to the public the necessary reasons why we need to be able to have internet in our homes. I mean, I use it every day and mostly for school board.
Ms. Williams.
I would suggest that wherever our salary is printed, I've never seen it. In fact, when I ran on the school board, I didn't even know we got paid until after I got elected. So, but wherever it's printed, I would suggest 14,000 plus 1,200 in phone allowance and 1,200 in data allowance so that everybody knows what we're getting. Or, I mean, 12,000.
He just gave himself a raise.
So I would suggest that to be transparent and that printed, wherever it's printed out there.
Mr., Ms., Mr., Ms. Franklin, sorry about that. I was looking at Mr. Kalin and saying, yeah.
That he she there. But I wanted, so I think that one of us had actually recommended that we make it optional. So I would just ask that if PRC does discuss that, that it is an optional allowance. And we don't, if we want to take it, great. If we don't want to, then that's great too, okay? So if, we could just make sure that it's considered optional.
Thank you for reiterating that, I appreciate it. Okay, anyone else? All right, let's move on to our D, school board committee assignment, Sister Cities, the SBA liaison appointments. I discussed this in our last school board meeting in, at the workshop. And I've had to resign from Sister Cities that, in that position as the liaison for the, since I've been on the board for six and a half years. So I am recommending.
Can I do point of order? Were we, were we voting on the data allowance?
No, it's just information.
Point of order, Madam Chair, it is on the agenda to vote on. It's action item number 15B.
Thank you.
It's on there and we didn't amend, so. All right, so anyway, I am recommending as the chair of the school board for the appointment to replace me on the Sister Cities liaison position, Mrs. Anderson. And for the V SBA liaison appointments, I am the representative and we need a, an alternate, which will be Mrs. Anderson. So that's the information. Is there any questions on those, those two appointments? We discussed it at the last meeting, but if anybody thinks of anything or. Ms. Anderson.
I'm most willing to do those two assignments, but if anybody else would like to step in, I most graciously would step aside and allow anybody else to do those things as well. So I don't have to be the one, but I have been the alternate for Sister Cities for a couple of years and have worked close with Ms., Mrs. Riggs on several of the committees that we did. And so I am participating and have participated with, especially with our, our youth ambassador program. So, but if anybody else wants to step up, I'll graciously step aside.
Ms. Franklin.
I just want to know, what is the time commitment for and the, the schedule for the Sister Cities? Oh, is it?
Pretty large time commitment.
Okay.
It is a pretty large one. It, the meetings are monthly usually. There's a lot of time spent on fundraising and the youth ambassador event, which will be, it's usually in March or April. This year it's supposed to be in January, so.
I would be willing to be alternate. I don't want to be the primary on that, but I'd be willing to be alternate for Sister Cities.
Sounds great to me.
Okay. So I guess we would need an amendment to that, or Ms. Lynetti?
It's information. You would just bring it back next time if you want to change, alter the recommendation.
Well, it's for action.
Oh, that's right, that, sorry.
It's for action.
With the action, all right, then I think.
Do we make the amendment now or do we make it during action?
You'd make it during action, but if you can tell everyone now that there's anybody else interested.
Yeah, or is there, is there anybody else who would, or the V SBA alternate for that matter? Okay. All right, so we'll make that amendment during our action agenda. And I guess, let me, let me revert back also because Ms. Anderson brought up the, the point about the data allowance. That's on action too, because we had decided at the last meeting that we would have it on information and action. So we're going to have to, you know, make an amendment back then, you know, when we come to action. Well, we'll make the amendment and we can decide if we vote on it or don't vote on it. Okay? Everybody understand that? Okay, thank you. And our last one is the bylaw 128 Governance Committee Matters Complaint by a Citizen. And this was the complaint that was brought before, that's all I'm going to say, brought before the governance. And I'm going to ask Ms. Melnick to continue with the presentation.
In accordance with, and I am a member of the governance committee and that's why I'm reading this. In accordance with, I saw some children. Hope they're not in here. In accordance with School Board Bylaw 1-28, on August 9, 2023, the School Board Governance Committee reviewed a complaint alleging that during the school board meeting on May 23, 2023, Ms. Riggs made the comment asshole after the conclusion of a citizen's public comment. Please note, the August 9, 2023 meeting of the Governance Committee was the first scheduled meeting after we received the citizen's complaint. The Governance Committee read the complaint and watched the recording of the May 23, 2023 public comment portion of the school board meeting. Although it can be heard on the recording that the word asshole was said, the recording does not show who made the comment. Although a citizen has offered to provide a voice analysis of the recording, the Governance Committee did not entertain that offer. Neither the Governance Committee nor the Department of Technology was able to determine with any reasonable degree of confidence who made the comment that is on the recording. However, the Governance Committee did agree that comments made by anyone at a school board meeting should be respectful and reflect the courtesy and decorum expected in a public meeting of the school board. No disrespectful comment should have been made regarding the public comment. Therefore, the Governance Committee is recommending that the school board apologize that a citizen was subject to such comment and take certain actions to avoid future incidences. Going forward, while public comments are being entertained by the school board, school board members' microphones should be turned away or turned off. The school board clerk will handle all comments to speakers. Should there need, should there be a need to enforce rules of decorum and order, the school board chair or the chair's designee will address such situations. The school board chair will also remind citizens attending the school board meeting that respectful and courteous behavior is expected in order to maintain decorum and order. Madam Chair, this is the recommendation from the Governance Committee. A similar letter will be drafted to the citizen and presented to the school board for approval. No vote is needed at this time, but it will be added to the 26 September agenda.
Thank you for that information. Now we're going to return to the public comments.
Madam Chair, are we going to have any discussion on this?
That was information.
Right, but we speak about information.
Well, we can.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So in the letter that I have in front of me, I just have some concerns with what's in it because it says the school board clerk will handle all comments to speakers. And I just have a real problem with that because in our bylaws, we have the duties of the chair and the vice chair. And several of the duties of the chair pertains to management of the meetings. And it says to preside at all the meetings of the board, to preserve order at all times and to endeavor to conduct all business before the school board with propriety, decorum, and dispatch. That's not the job of the clerk.
And that's not, let me, let me explain, let me.
Madam Chair, can I just say?
I've got it.
I know, but I have to explain, I rewrote the letter. So the draft that she has.
But it still says the same type, it still says the same thing. When this happened, it was already reverted back to, and they just, it just means that the clerk will welcome the speakers.
It says the clerk will handle all comments to the speakers.
No, that doesn't, that's going to be changed because it, she's just going to call the names of the speakers. And if someone is having a problem with, like if their virtual is speaking and we can't hear them, she'll respond to them. That's what that means. So that needs to be clarified, I agree.
Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, may I? What's not in the, the draft letter in front of you is the portion that I added this evening that says, should there be a need to enforce rules of decorum and order, the school board chair or the chair's designee will address such situations. And I will submit this to the attorney and, and then that can be clarified, what we discussed in governance.
Thank you, thank you for reiterating that and rereading it. Ms. Brown.
Okay, so this was the May 23 meeting and, and this was quite some time ago. I, I understand that the Governance Committee did not meet until August 9. I can say after listening to it with this, and based on what I witnessed that night, with a certain degree of certainty who it was, but I'm disappointed that nobody on this board is willing to own up to this behavior. I, I'm going to continue keeping my mic off during public comments as we usually do, but I am even more disappointed that Mr. Bell reached out via email and that the normal process of a response with some sort of, I'm sorry that that happened, no one's come forward, never occurred, it never came. Another citizen got a response, but not that member of the public. And then on a final note, I would at least hope that if we can send a letter three months after somebody was called an asshole on this dais, that we could at least spell their name right. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. I might add, there is other, there are other complaints that have been brought before the governance. And one of them was before that complaint that has not been taken care of as well. So sometimes it takes longer to get through these. And I will say this tonight because it is my turn. That was never said by me. I'm going to say it again and I'll say it loud and clear to everyone. I did not say that. I do not know who said it. I do not know who, I'm not asking anybody to come forward. But I am telling you, I did not say it. Just like I told the one person. I'm not getting into a back and forth dispute with someone on an email or in, on the dais. But I'll say it right now and I will not mention it again. Thank you. Mr. Culpepper.
I'll be honest, I don't want to talk about this. Yeah, in the Navy, we always say praise in public, punish in private. To me, this is a private conversation, but this is the only place to have it. And this is also the first time I've seen this. It makes me very uncomfortable. It essentially says, we're the government, we investigated ourselves, we find nothing wrong. And on top of that, it says, the complainant offered to pay with his own money to provide further evidence, which might prove definitive, and we decline to review it. I think that's really a bad look.
Thank you. We will return to public comments.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker will be April Sherman. Speaker number 21 had to cancel, so that'll be Cindy Little and then Becky Hay.
Good evening. I must have really wanted to talk, I stayed, huh? So thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for the job that you do for the city and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is April Sherman. I've been a citizen of Virginia Beach for 22 years and had two children that went through the public school system. And I'm here tonight in support of the 2023 model policies. And it's really because I believe in protecting all parents, all children, all people. I heard a lot tonight and I had wrote this nice speech and I kind of threw it out the window and started taking about a million notes. So I'm really not sure what I'm getting ready to say. But know that it's from the heart, know that it's genuine and know that I want you to hear it. And I hope it resonates and that you take it with you. I did listen to the last board meeting. I heard so many speakers speak about mental health, about gender identity, about everything that goes into all of that, and I respect it all. I heard all of you debate it. I heard your opinions, I heard you go back and forth on the legalities, on the policies, even on the politics side of it, and I respect that. But to be honest, my opinion, my values, my morals, your opinion, your values, your morals, honestly aren't what's at debate. What's at the heart of it, what's at the debate of it is what should be, what is school? What is school supposed to be? What should it be? What should we provide our children? What's the parent's role? What's the teacher's role? In my opinion, and in every day of my children's lives, my role was to be that person who set the morals, who set the values. Now, a lot of people talk about, not every home has that. And it's so true and it's so sad. I came from a home that didn't have it. I made a choice to provide it. So that's, I know every situation is unique. With all of that said, our role as parents is very different than our role as teachers and educators. If you listen tonight, it sounded like a teacher was supposed to be a mental health professional. It sounded like they were supposed to be a counselor, a licensed therapist, a best friend, you name it. And that's not fair. But it's also not fair to say that them talking to parents is a burden on them. I think that is part of their role. Parents and teachers have to be united. We have to be together. The board and the parents have to be together. That's how we raise up our.
30 seconds.
That's our goal, is to raise productive citizens. That's your mission. That's parents' mission. We can't fight about it. We have to communicate. We have to, I believe we have to enact the model policies, not to figure out what fits everybody, not to figure out what the right thing to do is to make everybody happy and to make sure everybody feels respected, but because doing the right thing is the right thing to do. And if we keep the children in front of mind and we keep.
All in his time.
We'll win. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is Cindy Little, Becky Hay, and Valerina Davis. Cindy Little? Becky Hay?
Well, here we are again tonight discussing the model policies. There's been people that have been far more eloquent than I will be tonight, but I'm just going to kind of cut to the chase and get to the basics here. I extend my thanks to the PRC for including the proposed revisions before, brought before the board tonight, that the requirement that parents should be informed before their children are given counseling on gender identity issues and the opportunity to object. However, this is a bare minimum attempt to comply with the administrative law required by the DOE. This provision only scratches the surface in what is needed for compliance and it's only a small step toward. only a small step towards acknowledgement of parental priority in matters of their children and in the safety and privacy of students across the division. One of the key components in the 2023 model policies is the restoration of parental notifications of matters, in matters of student gender confusion and gender identity. Tonight's proposed revisions do nothing to comply with the law requiring teachers notify parents, and thus, the PRC and the board continue to allow for secrecy and deception in keeping critical knowledge from parents regarding their children. In addition, there's no language included to protect district employees or students from being unconstitutionally compelled to speak in a manner that violates their faith or conscience. Does the board not remember the case of Tanner Cross in Loudoun County? The PRC and board continue to allow for the bludgeoning of the First Amendment in matters of speech and faith. Furthermore, the current recommendations before the board tonight would still allow students access to locker rooms, bathrooms, and field trip sleeping accommodations based on gender identity rather than biological sex. This policy produces an egregious lack of privacy and threatens the security of most district students, especially girls. Bottom line, the revisions, labor discussions on detailed minutia of all the what-if scenarios, and the minimalist attempts at compliance must stop. The board must adopt the policies without further excuse, delay, or deferment. If the board adopts the current proposed changes and edits, it's not a matter of if the district will be sued, but rather when. And if we have, and we have the assurance of the Attorney General that these suits will be prioritized as critical, because they are. Y'all are not attorneys. After months of posturing and pontification, please do the jobs you were elected to do, adhere to your oaths of office, and adopt and fully implement the 2023 model policies. Anything less is an affront to the law, a usurpation of parental rights, and a dereliction of duty. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Valerina Davis, and then Carol Kinsey.
Good evening. My name is Valetia Davis. I am a parent. I'm also a real adult, and I have some observations. What a tremendous amount of time, energy, and dedication so many people here have had to address a policy that has no effect on them personally or socially, but does have an effect on children like mine. I attempt to understand the concerns about transness being a social contagion, or how lack of faith rips at the very fabric of our society, about how parents need to know if children have asked a teacher to use their name and pronoun. But right now, teachers ignore these requests. Right now, LGBTQ students are harassed for being themselves. Right now, my child is alive because a few friends and teacher knew the truth and showed respect, decency, and kindness without me being involved until he was ready. I'm okay with that, because I want a living child of any gender. I want my kid and those like him to have access to what might be their only safe and accepting space, their school, friends, and trusted teachers, not that their teachers are in any means a therapist. Schools have nothing to do with permanent medical changes regarding a child. Schools can, if the school board does what is right, give children basic respect. VB schools can be a safe space for all children to be themselves. Yonkin's model policy is full of sound and fury, signifying discrimination and capitalizing on fear, but hiding behind the guise of morals and parental rights. The concerns voiced here by some are unfounded in medical or psychological care. Family and individual decisions have nothing to do with Yonkin's policy. The Yonkin policy has everything to do with discrimination, for it singles out a marginalized group. Speak to me or any parents of trans kids. Your words indicate you haven't or don't care to. The truth is, there are no policies being debated that will attempt to fundamentally dictate your identity, to limit your access to bathrooms or activities, or to put you in harm's way through forced outing. Yet you're here, fighting not for rights, but against, and doing so while claiming these kids are like fascists. I wonder if you understand irony. It sounds like you don't trust me to keep my own children safe. I'm not telling anyone what to do with their children. It just sounds like you don't want trans kids to exist. It sounds like you are the moral authority. It sounds like you are telling me you know what is best for my child. It sounds like you know these kids better than they know themselves. Your words have love with condition. In the words of one of the greatest gender nonconformists, David Bowie, "These children that you spit on as they try to change their world are immune to your consultations. They're quite aware of what they're going through. Call them by their names, trust their words, fight Yonkin's policy, do what's right." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Kinsey.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Okay, whenever I get up here, this is with prayer and much love for all children, no matter who they are. Good evening. To be concise, one of the many great things the school system has taught me, point one, yes, to agree with some of you and some of the previous speakers, some of us are old. Some of us don't have children nor grandchildren currently in the system. However, we are taxpayers, with life experiences and changed values since we were young. We speak because of the love of our school system, because of our dedication to it, because of the friends still employed in the school system, because we desire the students to be well-educated with upstanding values of good citizens. Point two, you're either for the governor's policies, or you're not. You're either for God's divine design, boys are boys, girls are girls, or you're for allowing students to use the restrooms, locker rooms, and field trip accommodations based on their gender identity. Allowing your daughters and granddaughters to share a bathroom, a locker room, and a bedroom with a biological male. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker. We will now go over to our online speakers. Our first one is Dolores Pathites. We will try to move on to our second online speaker, Vic Nichols. Please unmute.
Policy 4-9, how will this policy work with potential COVID restrictions? 5-7, add back in the red deleted lines. I support the model policy changes in yellow. A shirt with an iPhone on it was worn that people felt was an underhanded threat. The board knows, will not acknowledge it or take action, but yet flags are a problem. We are called cisgender, but I am not allowed to call a person by their correct gender. What is the school board's compelling interest making them legally different? The board allows minors to speak first, constituting age discrimination. I give statements based on data facts and research. COVID mask and transgender policies have proven harmful to students. My purpose is for the board's decision-making. Dr. Spence started in 2014. My board sent graphs, started in 2015. The school board SOL scores came up in 2017 a little and then have dropped, but so are standards. While they are better than the state, workers of tomorrow need to be better prepared. Colleges give remedial classes, but I want kids to excel, do you? From the Virginia Beach School Board budget from 2019 to 2024, $39,200,000, $200,000 of federal dollars, $1,204,288,000 of state dollars were added to the school's operating budget. I pay federal and state taxes by goods and services in Virginia Beach, and therefore pay Virginia Beach taxes. To protect against retaliation, I've spoken so that relatives and friends' kids would not experience that. I'm not an elected official who accepted a notable business reward in another city, nor do I have a conflict of interest properties outside of the city or state. I'm simply concerned, for example, about females not getting raped in bathrooms. Chesapeake is smaller, but has a better record than Virginia Beach on truancy. If you care about kids, you look at other districts to make yours better. Cities and other school boards do this routinely. Legally, when a school board allows for public comment, it creates a designated public forum, meaning the public generally has the right to speak regarding matters within the school board's jurisdiction. Any content-based restriction must be necessary to achieve a compelling school board interest. A local school board has already had to reverse several decisions because of viewpoint.
Thirty seconds.
The board is on extremely legal shaky ground. And since it is requested for us to respect other people, it would be nice if the board respected us and showed up for when we speak. Thank you.
We'll try one more time. Doris Pathites, please unmute. Okay, Madam Chair, she's still online, but she is not on muting, so we can continue with the board meeting.
Okay, so we are on 14 consent agenda. The consent agenda items are, A, Policy Review Committee, PRC recommendations; 1, Policy 2-48, salaries and compensation; 2, Policy 4-7, nepotism, employment/supervision of relatives; 3, Policy 4-9/health certifications/medical examinations/communicable disease awareness/fitness for duty; 4, Policy 4-10/conditions of employment; 5, Policy 4-11, appointment; 6, Policy 4-12, assignment/reassignments and transfer; 7, Policy 4-13, contract period/calendar workdays; 8, Policy 4-14, alternative work schedules, 12-month, non-instructional employees; 9, Policy 4-20, reduction in force, RIF; 10, Policy 4-23, conflict of interest; 11, Policy 4-33, investigative procedures; 12, Policy 4-38, travel expenditures/reimbursement; 13, Policy 4-42, property damage/reimbursement; 14, Policy 4-45, sick leave banks; 15, Policy 4-49, military service; 16, Policy 4-51, lawsuits and subpoenas; 17, Policy 4-57, licensed personnel contracts; 18, Policy 4-65, meetings and conferences; 19, Policy 4-66, tutoring for pay; 20, Policy 4-67, investigating/reporting alcohol or drug use; 21, Policy 4-68, reporting child abuse or neglect; 22, Policy 4-70, licensed personnel, teacher salary scale; 23, Policy 4-73, awards for achievement and service; 24, Policy 4-83, evaluation; 25, Policy 4-85, meetings, conferences, and conventions; 26, Policy 4-86, classified personnel compensation; 27, Policy 4-87, overtime; 28, Policy 4-91, student teachers; 29, Policy 4-92, summer school teachers, assignment and placement; 30, Policy 4-97, administrative interim and administrative assistance; 31, Policy 5-9, age of entrance/kindergarten. 32 and 33 are taken off. Now, B, program evaluation scheduled for 2023, 2024. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items as presented? Hearing none. I call to move an item, we already, oh, hearing no call to move an item, which we did have the call to move the item for the consent agenda, Policy 5-7 and Policy 5-31. So that was moved already. I call for a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Brown, and seconded by Ms. Anderson. No more discussion? Okay. I call for a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. Action, Personnel Report, Administrative Appointments. I call for a motion to approve the September 12, 2023 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Do I have a motion? Ms. Anderson and seconded, Mrs. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the September 12, 2023 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass.
Dr. Robertson, are there any administrative appointments?
Yes, I am pleased that this evening, the board has approved our recommendation of Kamani Vaughn, currently principal at White Oaks Elementary School, formerly a principal at Arrowhead Elementary School, with two different stints as an assistant principal and many years as a teacher, to be the new director of elementary schools and Department of School Leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. B, data allowance for school board members. Okay, this is where I'm going to call for a motion to approve the request to add $100 a month allowance to offset costs for technology use on personnel home devices, personal home devices to conduct business of the school board. Is there any? So moved. Is there, okay.
Is there a second?
Is there a second? Seconded, Ms. Owens. Okay, now, is there any discussion on this? Ms. Manning.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a substitute motion to send this back to PRC for them to consider it, to be considered under the bylaw that's appropriate for this matter.
Okay. Make your motion, please.
I made it.
Say it one more time.
I move that we send this item back to PRC to be considered as a bylaw.
Okay. Do I have a second? Ms. Melnick, seconds. Okay, is there any discussion on that? Ms. Owens.
I just want to say that I have no problem with it waiting and coming back to PRC. We can discuss it this week at the PRC meeting. I would ask that when it comes back, obviously, it'll be on information, but I would plan on making a motion to then bring it down to action, since we've already had the opportunity to discuss it more than once. But I have no problem with us laying it out and showing what it would look like before being voted on. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Anderson?
I support that as well, as long as we get to vote on it inaction the next time we meet.
Okay, so the amendment to this motion made by Mrs. Manning.
It's a substitute, Madam Chair. It was a substitute, not an amendment.
Yeah, the substitute. All, we had a second, all in favor of the substitute motion. Please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, so Ms. Manning's substitute motion did pass.
Okay, so we will be bringing back, sending the data allowance for school board members on the next PRC agenda, which is this coming Thursday, and asked to be put on action, so you guys can discuss that as well. So we are now at our committee organization and board reports. Do we have any?
Madam Chair, we have to vote on the school board committee assignments.
I'm sorry, for some reason, my script ran out. There we go. School. School board committee assignments, Sister Cities and V S B A liaison appointments. I call for a motion to approve the school board chair's recommendations for appointments of Beverly Anderson to serve as the school board liaison to the Virginia Beach Cities/Sister Cities Association and for the appointment of Beverly Anderson to serve as alternate liaison to the Virginia Beach Board Association, excuse me, the V S B A Association. And then I know there's going to be a substitute. Ms. Anderson.
I'd like to amend that or substitute that to include Ms. Franklin as the alternate for Sister Cities as well.
Do I have a second to that? Okay, Ms. Weems, is there any discussion on adding that substitute motion? Okay, seeing none, I need a second. I have a second. I need to see everyone's hands raised that agree with that substitute motion.
Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. Ms. Anderson's substitute motion to add Ms. Franklin as the alternate to Sister Cities did pass.
Okay, so, thank you. Bylaw 128, Governance Committee Matters. Complaint by citizen. I call for a motion to approve a recommended letter and course of action regarding a citizen's complaint about comments made after he concluded his public comment to the school board on June 12, 2023. Do I have a motion? Okay. Then I need a substitute.
We need to write, we would need to write you a letter.
Right.
It's actually appropriate. This is, as written, this is more of the recommendation for the Governance Committee. So coming back, I think you probably need to write the letter for the board to actually look at if that's what you want to do.
All right, so Madam Chair, I offer a substitute motion that we draft a letter to the citizen to be presented to the board at the next meeting.
Madam Chair, point of order, we don't have a motion on the floor, so we can't have a substitute motion.
She asked for that.
I said I call, I said I call for a motion. And I didn't have anybody make that motion.
So hers would be a motion, not a substitute motion.
Right.
Okay, I move that we draft a letter. For the next meeting. I move that we draft a letter for the citizen in regards to the complaint that was brought forward.
Do I have a second? Ms. Anderson, second. Any discussion? Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with voting on something when I haven't seen the letter. So I'm going to be opposed to this because I don't know what's going to be sent.
It's just.
She made the motion that there is a letter to be drafted to bring forward to us to look at.
Correct.
Not to, not to okay it.
That's not the motion that I heard, so.
That's what she said, to draft a letter.
Draft a letter to bring back to the board for a vote.
That is what I said.
Okay, all right, thank you. I didn't hear that part.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay. So the motion is made by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Ms. Anderson. For the Governance Committee has recommended a letter to be drafted to the citizen that is complaining about a school board member making a comment after their speech on June 12, 2023.
The motion was to draft the letter.
The motion is, so the motion is to draft a letter to bring it back to us.
For a vote.
For a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, all in favor of the letter being drafted and being brought back to us at the next meeting, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hand.
And we have one nay, so the motion did pass.
Thank you. Now we are on sixteen committee organizations.
Point of order, Madam Chair, we adjusted the agenda. We need to vote on its action item 15E, PR recommendations for number one, Policy 5-7, and then number two is going to be Policy 5-31.
Right, that's right, bringing it back for information.
No, it's action.
Excuse me, I mean for action. Okay, so, Policy 5-7, nondiscrimination and nonharassment of students. All right, I call for a motion to bring this back for discussion and to approve. Are we approving?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to bring this back for action?
During the agenda adoption, Ms. Brown asked for it to go under action.
And it was, okay.
So you would be calling for a motion to approve Policy 5-7. Need a second? Open up for discussion, and then you have the vote.
So do I have a motion to bring this? Ms. Brown, do I have a second? Mr. Culpepper, all right.
Can you clarify the motion? Because I'm not sure, we've had a couple of different. Is it, what's in our policy?
Yeah.
That, just like that?
Yes.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you.
So what you see on your agenda, the nondiscrimination, nonharassment of students, Policy 5.7, Ms. Brown asked for it to be brought forward to action. It's been seconded. The motion's made, it's been seconded. Now there's a discussion. Do we have anybody that wants to speak? Mrs. Brown.
Okay, so the reason that I pulled this isn't because I don't support it. I do actually support it. The language that's in the policy here, to me personally, represents a compromise. It's the same compromise, pretty much, that occurred in 2021. It says the superintendent or designee is directed to develop regulations, practices, and trainings related to compliance with Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3 as amended. And then the title of the previous model policies is in there. It is my opinion that removing the title of the policy doesn't change the intention of the policy. Even if this board does not adopt the new Policy 5.7, this Policy 5.7 still has the same intentions. There's, you know, a lot going on to kind of slow the process of the model policies, so it feels like. But our current policies do direct the superintendent to implement the model policies. I know there was a June 13 resolution. Since then, the Attorney General has very specifically put out a legal opinion, says, "In my opinion, the model policies comply with the Equal Protection Clause, Title IX, the Virginia Human Rights Act, and that pursuant to Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3, local school boards are required to adopt policies that are consistent with them." So unless this board changes these policies to say that we are not doing the model policies, our division should be doing the model policies because that was the consensus of this board the last time Policy 5.7 came to a vote. And so I just wanted to illuminate that language again. But I just wanted to be sure the public knew, and I wanted to say that for my colleagues. Thanks.
You just explain that again, because.
Can you explain that again, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So our current existing Policy 5.7 says the superintendent or designee is, and let me pull it right back up again.
Okay.
I see it.
I have the spinning wheel on my computer. So essentially, though, it says superintendent or designee is directed to make practices and trainings consistent with, oh, here we go, "to develop regulations, practices, and trainings related to compliance with the Code of Virginia 22.1-23.3 as amended." The only change in the Policy Review Committee in reference to the model policies was scratching out the name, but that did not change the law that it's affiliated with. And so I would just ask my colleagues to recognize that our current policy directs the superintendent to make these regulations. And unless we have a majority vote that is going to undo that part, superintendent or designee needs to make those regulations, practices, and trainings. You know, and my colleagues may have different opinions, but that is what I'm seeing here. And again, the June 13 resolution has clearly been stated, does not violate these laws according to this legal opinion from the Attorney General. And so I believe we need to follow them. But I don't see any reason to not support it as it is. I just, again, wanted to point out that that is the compromise, at least for me. I would love to see more of the model policies and policy instead of, you know, regulation. But I would like our superintendent to be able to have the direction he needs to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand.
I don't either.
Ms. Brown, I'm sorry, Ms., may I ask Ms. Brown a question? I don't quite understand what you're objecting to on Policy 5.7. Are you objecting to 5.7?
Madam Chair, can I answer?
Yes.
I am not objecting to 5.7. I am saying that our current policy directs the superintendent or designee to make regulations, practices, and trainings related to compliance with the Code of Virginia.
Is it in 5.7? I don't know where that is.
That's not what we're reading.
We're not, we're not doing Policy 5.7 right now?
Yeah.
But it's.
Yes, we are. We are.
So this is another reason why we need to be able to put, send this to PRC and work this out in PRC, not here on the dais.
Ms.
Existing policy, right. And we need to make some changes. This is why we objected to this. This is part of our discussion that we were going to be having in our, later this evening, as we go back to workshop. And this is one of the reasons why I suggested that we not, that we not do this right now, that we, that we wait and let, either talk about this during our workshop that we're going back to and work it out there or work it out this Thursday when we meet with PRC. And then it would be ready to bring back this board for a vote. We could come straight to action, if we so choose, at the next meeting. But it's not ready right now. So we're going to sit here on the dais and make these little word changes, whereas we really need to be focusing on this later, which is what we said we were going to do back in our workshop. And, you know, I just, I would suggest that that's what we need to do, is we need to defer this until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weems.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no discussion for this. It's, all it's saying, it's saying exactly what we voted on a couple of years ago, that we're directing the superintendent to develop regulations, practices, and trainings related to the compliance with Code of Virginia. And so, and we're leaving out the old northern policy. It doesn't change anything. It's just directing the superintendent to do what he's supposed to do. There's no word changes or working out anything.
Excuse me, then I'm fine with it, the way it is.
So, Ms. Brown, basically you asked to put it on action so we could discuss it and we could vote. Go ahead and vote on this. That's the bottom line. Okay. That is why she asked to put it on action. All right, now, the next person that's in the, to speak, is Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I want to agree with Ms. Brown that Policy 5.7 has gone to PRC. We have talked about it. There is minimal change to it, basically taking out the name of the previous model policy and making update to, and I don't think we're using the names anymore, but just the code sections so that we don't have to continue to update them. I will say, just for general purposes, I don't support the policy, but not because of a change that needs to be made from what we've already had. I don't support the policy because I don't support the regulations that I'm seeing come forward from the model policy. I don't think that some of the regulations are best practice and healthy for our students. When I've heard from the public, I've listened to parents of transgender children in our district, and every single one of them had said this, the regulation implementation in their schools is going to be damaging to children. Heard from a lot of parents, a lot of different opinions, but the parents of transgender children in our district have said it's going to be damaging. We all get to have different opinions on it. We get to vote on it. The change in the policy is minimal. It's going to be pushed through regardless. And we'll, we'll work through that with those parents. So, thank you.
Ms. Franklin.
Ms. Lanetti, is she here? Sorry, I couldn't see her. So, the policy doesn't, Policy 5.7 is not changing. It just directs the superintendent. So as we are working through, if we pass Policy 5.7, I just want clarity here. If we pass, pass Policy 5.7, does that still give us the opportunity to work with the superintendent on other regulations? Or are we passing it? Because I, quite frankly, I feel like we made good progress in workshop, but I don't, I want to be clear on what I am actually.
I think you need to read that sentence very carefully. It was written very specifically for a reason, the way it is. You're interpreting it one way. I think you need to read that sentence again.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I think you're interpreting the sentence to read. Let me read it out to you, and I'm going to tell you. And we wrote it this way specifically. The superintendent designee is directed to develop regulations, practices, and trainings related to compliance with Code of Virginia 22.1, 23.3 as amended. You're interpreting that to mean one thing because that's someone behind, whatever. That is not necessarily what it says.
Well then, please clarify.
What does it say?
It says, "related to compliance." It does not say "in compliance" because that was the choice you made back then, that you would determine, because you were not in agreement with all the northern policies. So we altered some of them to suit how you wanted to interpret it. So that's, you're reading and saying "in compliance." It was reading "related to compliance" in that you were directing him, which is why the superintendent's been in a situation where you need to be able to tell him how you want to comply with the policies. And we did it that way on purpose because you were not in agreement with all the northern policies. So we altered some of them to interpretation how you wanted. So you're reading what you want to read. I would read that language carefully.
So, I thank you. So are you saying that if we go ahead and pass under action Policy 5.7, we're just directing the superintendent to move, create regulations that would be related to compliance? Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Ayes.
Oh.
Ms. Weems.
Dr. Robertson, would this be helpful, extremely helpful or harmful if we passed this for you?
This would be helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Owens.
I just wanted to kind of. I just wanted to kind of follow up on what Ms. Lanetti was saying. Part of why this policy didn't get unanimous votes last time we did it is because there was concern about putting the responsibility to implement whatever bits and pieces were going to be implemented on superintendent in the form of regulations, that school board doesn't vote on regulations. And so it went through with votes, the majority vote, with a, a level of hesitant confidence in what was going to be put into play in regulation. Members had spoke with the superintendent and spoken, and those who were semi-in agreement with where those regulations were expected to go, voted for it. Those who weren't sure about where those regulations were going to go, didn't vote for it. And so now we're in the same place again, where school board doesn't write regulation, and it's not clear what is going to be put into play. I do have all faith that Dr. Robertson is going to be open with us and share regulation, but we don't always, until just recently, are now getting routine updates on regulation changes, and they'll show up in our, our shared drive, but that wasn't something that previously we were even made aware of. And so the way it's being passed now, things can change. We may not be aware, it's not going to be a vote, and we've seen what happens when we get information, and it wasn't a vote. We've seen how that played out with the gifted stuff. We were informed, it wasn't a vote, and it slipped past. It's not something I'm comfortable with. Thank you.
Ms. Milne.
So, I don't want to repeat what, what Ms. Owens just said, but basically, it's just a two-sided argument, right? So, a couple of years ago, absolutely not. We do not, we, the superintendent works for us. We tell the superintendent what to do, and that's how the Northam, I think that's, that's the most important part, is we did not adopt Northam's policies in totality, and I think the public has not understood that. That is the truth, and I'm glad that this has come up like this, so the public does know that we struggled a few years ago with this. But this is what happens, and this is what's going to continue to happen every four years with a new governor in the state of Virginia. New model policies are going to come out, and it's going to be one side or the other, and we're going to flip and we're going to flop, and the bottom line is, we still need to have a level of trust in our superintendent. And so if all this is doing is directing the superintendent, then I'm in favor of allowing the superintendent to, to do what he needs to do. Like I said, there has to be a level of trust, and we're, this, this will be revisited again with the election of a new governor in this Commonwealth. And so get used to it, and it's going to flip-flop. So I hope in the future we can all go back and watch these meetings and maybe save ourselves hundreds of hours of discussion and just say, hey, here we are. So, thank you.
Ms. Manning.
So I just want to clarify what the motion is on the floor, because it's my understanding, based upon what I looked in the document that I have on my SharePoint Drive, and that what the public is seeing, is that the vote we're having tonight is on a specific change to Policy 5-7 that simply removes the title of the old model policies. That is what we're voting on, correct? Okay. I, I just, I didn't want to make it more complicated than it was, and just wanted to clarify that. Because there's some things else in the policy that I didn't vote for the first time, but I support that removal. Thank you.
Okay. So we're ready to vote, and we need to state what we're going to vote on. So we're vote, we are voting on the 5-7 as presented to us tonight. Okay? Everybody understand? All right. All that are in favor of voting for 5-7, please raise your hand.
All that are not in favor, please raise your hand.
And we have one nay, so the motion did pass.
Thank you. Now that brings us to the next policy that was asked to be put on action, moved from consent to action, and it's Policy 5-31, student records. And Ms. Brown had asked, so Ms. Brown, would you proceed?
Sure. So I have a substitute motion. All of you all should have that in front of you at this point.
Madam Chair, point of order, that if she's bringing forward something, it's a motion, not a substitute.
Oh, a motion.
Yeah, you need to make it with a motion. Now, you gave us one earlier, then you've, we've gotten a new one, received a new one since we've been sitting on the dais.
Yes, so I talked to a few board members. I took into account some of what I heard when we were in the workshop, and I asked Ms. Lanetti to print a new one. What I do not know, Ms. Lanetti, is in this motion, do I need to read the whole thing or just the red line area?
The whole policy, oh my goodness, no, it's a seven-page policy. I don't think you want to do that.
I don't.
Okay, what, the difference is, and I just explain it, as in originally, there was, coming out of PRC, there was a recommendation for, to add the definition of parent, because that wasn't in any of our policies at that point. I think this version has, what we were coming back with the recommendation, because I think there's a secondary red line having to do with records a little bit later in the policy. I'm sorry, I'm a minute later.
Here it is.
Yes, that one too. Point of order, please. Ms. Brown, what is the difference between the one you gave us earlier and the one that was passed down on the dais this evening?
Sure. The word "identity" is after "gender" on two occasions. We're, under transgender students. And I can read the whole definitions that were different than what's in the packet.
In the first paragraph, under A definitions...
Packet is also going to, what's in the agenda, put in the agenda, don't think it has the secondary, the G section also, because that was, what you have in the agenda is what came out of PRC with just a recommendation of a parent. We had been suggesting, had we gone through the workshop, that you add the secondary thing, so it's going to be what Mrs. Brown is offering, and then there's a secondary variation having to do with the, the records on there. So if you're online and looking at the agenda, you don't have this current version.
Right.
So should I just read the...
So go ahead, yeah, please read it for us, Ms. Brown.
Okay. I move that we adopt Policy 5-31 with the following added to Section A. Sex for the purposes of identifying an individual means biological sex. Transgender student means a VBCPS student whose parent has stated in writing that the student's gender identity differs from the student's sex, or an eligible student who states in writing that his or her gender identity differs from his or her sex. Any writing from the eligible student or parent of a minor student shall be memorialized in the student's official record and be subject to the same retention, disclosure, and confidentiality requirements as the official record itself. And then under Section G, will include at the end of that paragraph, student records, i.e. birth certificate, student information system, final transcript that require the use of student's legal name and sex as designated in the student's official records, do not be amended unless the eligible student or the parent of a minor student submits a legal document such as a birth certificate, state or federal issued identification, passport, or court order substantiating the change in the student's legal name or sex.
Clarification of the motion, please. Wouldn't parent also be added? Is that not in the, I don't think that's in the original.
It's already on there. On the...
Parent's already on there.
That's on, it's in red on mine.
No, no. Yeah, did you change anything in parent?
This is a primary motion that she's making, so she needs to include parent.
But it's already, it's on our, it's on the original.
No, no, it's not on the original.
But she's not, there is no original motion. This is the notion.
The, what's in the packet, coming out of PRC, was a recommendation to add a definition of parent.
Right, okay.
On there. So it doesn't appear that Mrs. Brown's including that parent definition, and now she's added a different definition.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, is your...
If you, you could do a substitute motion to take the definition of parent as it is in the agenda package and add that to it.
Okay, well, that was what I said, so it was all the same. I'm just adding those particular things. I can also read parent.
Read the parent for us, please.
I will also...
That you have on your page.
Include, read the whole page. Is that what you said?
No, just that, that's on your page that you gave us.
And also, parent or parents mean any parent, guardian, legal custodian, or other person having control or charge of a child. A child is determined to be a person under the age of 18 years of age. Students who are eligible students or adult students as used by the school division have the right to make decisions regarding the records and education.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion for 5-31, Policy 5-31, and we have a second now. Do we have discussion? Ms. Anderson?
So can you explain to me the reason that these definitions are needed? So they weren't there before. We, what was recommended from PRC is that we, we included the definition of parent or parents, but why, why do you feel it's necessary to include the definition of sex or transgender student? Why is it necessary?
Ms. Anderson, I might be able to take this question. If you see in the supplementary materials, which are the full policy and regulation that we supplemented in your paperwork this weekend, also on the chart that we gave you, we actually, after, if you remember when you met, the second time you met, you met on the 10th, and you had the school administration there, you met on the 14th again to go over, but at that point, the administration was committed to doing training. So my discussion was with you that we don't use, use the words "sex" or "transgender" very often in our policies. So we did not, PRC did not recommend bringing those forward at that time. Interviewing after that time period, after your last school board meeting and discussions, it became obvious that most of the board was looking to create policies and regulations that were more consistent with the 2023 policies. We worked on that since that time period. While working through that with the staff, it became obvious to us, if we did not have the definition of transgender or sex, implementing those policies or regulations to be consistent was going to make it very difficult for the school administration itself to be able to interpret that, because the way we were trying to bring the policy and regulations into compliance, we were going to need that so the staff would understand the terminology or somebody was challenging us. So we didn't have the benefit of the school administration there, and because of the last school board meeting, it appeared obvious to us that you wanted more in compliance. When we redrafted the regulations to come and make sure they were in compliance, we felt that definitions needed to be in there. I think had we had another meeting with the school administration afterwards, after the last meeting, they might have been, had more time to bring it to you, but that didn't happen between their schedule and the last school board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but first of all, so the public understands what's going on with this, as our SharePoint was updated Monday at noon. We got emails exchanged at 2:19 and 2:43, and then another Policy 5-31 at about 9:00 PM today on the dais. It's, it's very difficult to digest all of this information. This Policy 5-31 drives much of the regulation. I'm not ready to vote for 5-31 because I need to, it's the crux upon which much of what the superintendent is going to implement through regulation is going to rest. And so, for instance, I have a question. So Section G, it says, "student records, in order to be updated, will need a changed birth certificate, ID, passport, or court order." Not super difficult to get even for minors. But is, is the, the sex on, in this official record, the one that requires passport, ID, does that, is that what drives what restroom they use in Regulation 5-561F2? So students will use the rooming, bathing, and changing facilities that align with a student's sex or gender identity, as noted in the student's official records. So in order for a transgender student to use the restroom of their gender identity, do they need to submit that changed passport or certificate, or is that simply based on parent acknowledgement of the transgender status?
It's my understanding that if the parent writes it in, puts it in writing, that that's how you were going, what was put in the official record was what we were going to be working off of.
Okay. So that means that there will be trans women using the women's room. Is that correct?
That is the Grimm case right now, so yes. That is the status of law in the Fourth Circuit.
Okay. And then an 18-year-old senior has the legal ability to petition the court to change their name and gender, submit that to the school, and begin using the restroom of their choice. Is that correct?
Correct, but also under the Grimm case, if they're identifying the gender identity, they're identifying, without a legal change, they can use the bathroom.
Their choice. Okay. Okay, and so what I'm reading then is that parents who aren't comfortable with that happening, because that will happen, parents will give permission to their students to have a transgender identity, the students who aren't comfortable with that, that can then opt into a single-user facility. Is that correct?
That's been our policy, our regulation for several years.
Okay. So I, I need time to really think through Policy 5-31, and then all this matrix of regulations here. We didn't get a chance to go through all of that, and with these changes, this is a lot of information that is going to impact a lot of our students, transgender or cisgender. So I, I would really like not to decide on this one today, to have some, have another workshop on 5-31 in particular, and then we vote on that on the 20, what is it, 26th? I'm not ready to vote on this at all. It's just a lot of information. I'd like to make a substitute motion to Table 5-31 and do a workshop on, what day is that? The 26th?
Next meeting is scheduled for September 26th.
Yes.
So you, you're making a motion?
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
To bring Policy 5-31...
Back to the workshop tonight.
Back to the workshop on September 26th.
No, 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 we, we have a workshop tonight.
Oh, we're doing that tonight?
We're still working on that workshop tonight.
I, I still don't think that's enough time to digest, I mean, it's, I've been up since 6:00 this morning, to, to digest all of this, look through this regulation matrix with this policy in place.
Second.
I need time. I would like to see this back at workshop on September 26th.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion, okay. So now we have people ready to speak. Ms. Martin, you just spoke. Ms. Franklin?
What have to be on the substitute?
This is on the substitute motion. Do you want to speak? Anybody that wants to speak on the substitute motion?
Well...
Please raise your hand.
I, this relates to the substitute motion in the sense that before I can make a decision on what Ms. Martin recommended, I have, I need to get some clarity on some questions I have. Right. Correct, but I feel like if we do the workshop tonight, then we're putting the cart before the horse. We're, we're voting on something before we do the workshop, which is going to be impacting. So my question is, based on... So my question is based on, first of all, Ms. Lanetti, will you do me a favor? And with the Grimm versus Gloucester County, will you please just clarify, does that include locker rooms, bathrooms, or both?
Wait a minute. You have to. We have a substitute motion.
I, I understand, but I need to unders, I need to understand some question, or answers to my questions before I can know whether I want to push this to the next meeting or not. I, I, I mean, I, I, I can't, I can't make a decision on my vote.
You're asking me to ask Ms. Lanetti. Ms. Lanetti, can you please answer that question?
Madam Chair, I have questions on the Grimm thing as well, but the substitute motion is to send this back to the workshop, not on the Grimm case.
Correct, clearly, we still have a lot of questions.
Okay, so, all right, let's, unless you have a question about.
Substitute, Ms.
Substitute. Don't, okay. Ms., does Ms. Owens, do you have a question about it?
Just a comment, that it, it appears that there are a lot of questions that need to be discussed in a workshop, which is what was initially said. This is the second change we've got on this since getting here today, and I would be in favor of going to the workshop, asking the questions that need to be asked, getting an understanding of how that is going to impact the regulation, which has been my concern, is how does this play out in regulation, and then making an informed vote with all of the information upfront, so that nobody's able to say, I didn't realize it was going to play out that way.
Okay, so you, you have spoke on that substitute motion. Ms. Milne. Ditto. All right, Ms. Manning, did you have your hand raised for that one? But Ms. Anderson does.
I have a simple question. I want to know if we do discuss this tonight, and we solve it tonight in the workshop that we're going back to, are you okay with us bringing this back straight to action at the next meeting?
We could bring it straight to action at the next meeting. I do not want to vote on this tonight, because we need to have the discussion, and then I need to hear from constituents.
Okay.
And then vote on the twenty-sixth.
Right, we could, we possibly could vote on the twenty-sixth straight to action. Okay.
You do want to speak on this one?
Yeah, I, I do, because, I mean, we've, we've heard constituents, from constituents for the last year. I don't know why, I mean, I, I just, I, I don't know why we keep pushing, pushing this on down the road, and down the road, and down the road, and that's why I made my resolution at the last meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper.
Yeah, so, uh, you, you basically have two things here, right? You have the existing policy five thirty-one, and you have four paragraphs that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, because they're all pretty much directly out of the model policies. This is easy to move forward on.
Okay. All right, so we have the substitute motion. Ms. Franklin, you're speaking on the substitute motion.
Well, I just had a question. So, Ms., uh, for Dr. Robertson, if that's okay, Madam Chair. Okay, so, Dr. Robertson, with passing policy five dash seven and not passing policy five dash thirty-one, is that going to put you in conflict for where, how to move forward?
It, it very well could, yes.
Okay.
And then I would just seek clarification from Ms. Lanetti, because if you guys have passed five seven, do we need to go back onto a workshop, because you've directed me to do that? And so, quite frankly, one of the things that we've acknowledged here is, is, um, this is a really controversial, touchy topic for a lot of people. And all of you are trying to do the very best you can to put together the best possible product, which is why you've had this discussion so many times. Which is why Ms. Lanetti and I took the unusual approach of bringing forth regulations to this group before we drafted regulations. Because we absolutely recognized, whatever we did as an administrative body, you guys were going to feel the heat for, one way or the other, and I'd rather not do that. I'd rather be transparent in the process of developing the regulations along with you, so that we're all in agreement to the best of our ability on how to move forward with the new model policies. And so my wondering to Ms. Lanetti at this point is five seven has directed me to do that, so do we need to continue with a discussion with the board, um, around the language of regulations, which is not something we would normally do? I'm fine with doing either, uh, because I recognize that we're all going to own this. And quite frankly, this can be a career killer, killer for me. So I understand that one way or another. If I'm directed to do this, I'm going to do it, and it could absolutely derail whatever happens to me in a few months. But I accept that, because that's leadership.
I'm going to go back and point out that policy five seven, it says related to compliance. It doesn't say he's drafting, the superintendent is drafting in compliance. So you can direct him, he could direct it, how you want to comply. So that, in this particular case, and if you look at bylaw one thirty-three, while generally you don't do regulations, when those issues are controversial, you have the right to get involved in a regulation. And the fact that you passed a resolution in June, concerned about this, and the concern on this, I do think under these circumstances, you do need to give direction. And that's why we're trying to piece out, and we actually just drafted some language for you, and that's, if we could have gotten through the workshop, you could have talked there, and he would have had the direction. We're trying to, we tried to set it up so you would have the opportunity, you have the ability to rewrite these regulations, or tell him how you want them. I think this is so controversial, and you've spent so much time on it, that you do need to be involved in telling him what that, it's not that he couldn't, because he could go ahead and take his best judgment, I think he's tried to do that with his staff, but at the same time, you've been so involved, and I think you owe it to yourself to finish out the workshop and tell him how you want it to do. If you're at the end of the workshop, and you're okay with the regulation changes, you know, he can go forward and change that, but if you still want to play, you want to change the language, again, you have the right to rewrite a, a regulation or bring it back, but we haven't finished going through all of that.
Okay, um, Ms. Weems.
I think I'm hearing you clear, loud and clear, Dr. Robertson. Would passing policy five thirty-one be extremely helpful for you and/or Bobby Jamison?
Well, certainly, once the board makes a decision, that's going to be very helpful, because now we have our, our marching orders.
Yes, colleagues, I, I mean, we, we have been talking about this for a year. We need to pass this, give Dr. Robertson direction, and then we can tweak things like our lawyer said, with regulations, but this is policy, and we need to give him direction and move on. We have been talking about this for a year, and he has stated that he wants that. He stated it weeks ago, and now we're talking about kicking it down for two, or three, or four weeks. We can still pass this and still talk about the regulations at the workshop. It's two different things, but I encourage my colleagues to pass this policy five thirty-one right now. Thank you.
Ms. Brown? Oh, sorry, Ms. Milne.
Um, just for clarification, we have not been talking about this for a year. We talked about Governor Northam's policies for a year, but the model policies were dropped recently. We have not been talking about, we've been listening for a year. That's the difference. And so, we, and I, and I do, I want to repeat myself for this. We talked about Governor Northam's policies for a year. Yes, we did, and that's why, as, as Mrs. Lanetti stated, um, we did not, go ahead.
A clarification, the General Assembly passed twenty-two point one, twenty-three point three, directing the Virginia Department of Education to come up with transgender policies. So that was after, in 2020, after they amended the Virginia Human Rights Act to include gender identity and sexual orientation. It took VDOE the better part of a year to come up with those, and then you had an amount of time to do this. What the Youngkin administration came out with was what we thought was going to be effective last fall, got delayed, obviously, so you had some idea what you thought the regulation, the, the model guidelines were going to be, and they were tweaked a little this summer, so.
But the difference is we've been listening for a year, we haven't been talking for a year. And, and my only concern right now is a comment that was made, that some things have been talked about, it, it said, some of you were wanting something to be done, and I was unaware of any of that. There have been all kinds of little meetings between board members, even here today, and with Kami, and, and I would just like the opportunity to finish the workshop. So again, we can talk about this for a long time, but no matter what, we still have a workshop we have to finish.
Ms. Brown?
Okay, so, are we on the substitute still?
Yeah, yes, we are. We are on the substitute motion, and unless, do you want to speak to the substitute motion?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to the substitute.
Okay.
You know, and, and then I hope we can just, you know, move on and not kick the can down the road anymore, but, um, I did get the PRC agenda materials from 2021, and in May, in that particular packet, it, it stated that, um, the model policies had not been finalized, the June agenda, I was not able to obtain, um, and then they came out in August. I don't think we can really compare the two things. This was out for a year, um, but, and, and I, I do have the floor right now, thanks. I think right now what we need to do is give some direction. We did discuss these definitions. This was discussed, everything in here was discussed in the workshop today, all of it. This doesn't touch any of the parts that are related to other policies and regulations affiliated with the model policies. And so, um, I, I do not support, um, the substitute, because I want to give direction. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote on the substitute motion. Okay, so, Ms. Martin, repeat your substitute motion, please.
Um, I move to, um, our substitute motion to, um, take policy five dash thirty-one to a workshop, and then bring it back for action on September twenty-sixth.
Okay, and it was seconded by Ms., was it, Ms. Owens? Okay. All in favor of bringing it back to the workshop? Please raise your hand.
Madam? We have five ayes.
All against bringing it back to workshop? Please raise your hand.
And we have six nays, so Ms. Martin's substitute motion did not pass.
Okay, so that brings us back to the original motion. Ms. Brown, make your motion one more time, please.
Do you want me to read the whole thing again? I move that the policy five dash thirty-one, as previously presented, be voted on, or be approved for action tonight.
And seconded by Mrs. Manning? And then discussion, Ms. Manning wants to speak.
Yeah, so I think we left off with Kami talking about Grimm, and so when I'm voting on these definitions, I'm voting on these, adding these definitions, because the model policy says that we have to have these definitions in the policy, in our, in our policy. So that's why I'm voting on them. I'm not voting on whether or not a transgender student can go into a bathroom, and, and Ms., Ms. Lanetti brought that up and mentioned the Grimm case, and I just want to point out some things about Grimm, um, because I don't believe that a transgender student, that Grimm permits just any student from using a bathroom, because Grimm has to be very narrowly construed. The, the student had an official medical diagnosis of gender dysphoria. The school had received a formal letter from the child's doctor, the student had undergone, undergone hormone injections. These are all things that the court considered in their decision. The student, the student's gender identity was both persistent and consistent, the student's driver's license, um, had been changed to different sex, the student had obtained an official court order and a new birth certificate reflecting the change in sex. The court only addressed bathrooms, not locker rooms, they specifically stated that. And there were very specific, um, things about the facilities as well, they had made them so that they were private, so that there would not be any exposure to any other students. So when we're talking about Grimm, we can't use Grimm and just say, Grimm says that any, that a transgender student must be allowed to use the, um, restroom that aligns with their gender identity. That's not what Grimm said at all, and so I'll be glad to share this, um, case analysis with, of Grimm with the board, um, but I just wanted to, to say that, because I feel like these discussions are becoming what the superintendent's going to do. Um, and so I want to make it very clear that I do not support, um, biological males being able to use female restrooms or locker rooms, or playing on the same sports. We have to protect our, our girls, and I want to make that very clear. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Well, I.
Sorry, Ms. Milne, my computer's in the way. First, Ms. Milne, and then Ms. Anderson.
That was a different policy, that discussion, so I'm going to go back to the policy at hand, and that is your, um, I'm not allowed to talk to you like that. Mrs., Mrs. Brown removed one word, and that was the word gender. So it, it initially stated gender, comma, gender identity. Okay, thank you, stop. It originally said gender, comma, gender identity, and she removed the word gender, a gender. So my question is, what, what is the difference that the word gender would be removed and just have gender identity in the, in the policy?
I believe the regulations we were proposing, uh, the policies, we were proposing the definition said gender, gender identity. I think Mrs. Brown just said gender originally, and then she's gone and, and proposed an amendment to say gender identity. So what she saw, the gender and gender identity, that was what we were proposing as a, as a language that you could adopt into this regulation, so that wasn't on the agenda at this point. Mrs. Brown, I think, had put in just gender.
Yes.
Which was more what the model policy was saying, and now that we've gone to gender identity by.
We've excluded just the word gender, so can you explain the difference between gender and gender identity?
I cannot, and that is the problem. And so there is no definition, there are court cases, there are different explanations on it, but there is no, the model policies don't provide that for you. I'm not sure, I will tell you in the Fourth Circuit, I'm not sure that they, I think they've all considered it to be under the definition of sex, which is protected under Title Seven and Title Nine, but yeah, you don't have a, you don't have a definition in there, um, you will see some other, the Virginia Human Rights Act has definitions for them, but, um, the model policy did not.
Okay, so because there was no real way to define, you left both in?
Our suggestion, though, was that was going to cover either one of them, if there was any question on it, we thought that was a more comprehensive way to do it. Again, that's your decision, it was just a suggestion we had, we thought that would cover both, if there's any confusion.
So if that were just added back in, that, that, that helps me. And we just leave it as gender, comma, gender identity, because there is no definition, and nobody can explain?
I think that is going to be an area of litigation as part of this model policy, so I think you're going to have to make a decision how you want to handle it.
Ms. Franklin?
Well, I, first of all, I appreciate the gender identity being added back in, I think that that is more compliant with, um, the Human Rights Act, so I appreciate, um, the consideration to add the gender identity back in. And I do, we just want to ask, under, um, item G, for Dr. Robertson, Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, you may.
Ask him that? So, the student records, because we do have a requirement for the federal cards, right, to have the information supplied on that for us to get the federal funding, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so basically, this is just aligning to make sure that we are in line with our federal requirement to provide that information on the student. federal requirement to provide that information on the student. Is that correct or not?
I'm not sure that's on the federal card, which is saying, I think that, I think this is defining the type of information we would use to help us make a determination as to what you're, what's supporting the change on there. The federal card, to my knowledge, I'm not sure federal card asks about gender or sex.
Well, this, this talks about the legal name and sex. And if sex is, for the purposes of identifying the biological sex, we, is sex required to be identified on the federal card?
I'm not sure. Mr. Jamison is no longer, oh, yeah, he is. I don't know if, Mr. Jamison, if you are familiar enough with federal cards. If not, we can get that answer.
We can definitely get that answer. But it, I'll just say, to my knowledge, that is included on the federal card. I want to offer a little bit of clarification when it comes to this difference.
I kind of thought that it was as well.
So just to add, when we have this discussion about what's changing in a record, so we've had discussion previously tonight about receiving written instruction from a parent or an eligible student about a name or pronoun. That is merely changing how we refer to a student. With that in mind, that written instruction from the parent or eligible student would not change the transcript. It would not change the report card.
Correct.
It would not change what's in Synergy, our student information system. The only way that information would change is what you're reading in G.
Correct.
Is if we then receive a court order or some form of a legal document that then tells us that the legal name has now changed. Does that make sense?
Yes, no. And I, and I think that that is what I needed for clarity. Because to be honest with you, when we're just talking about records, this is more clear because we're not talking specifically about the pronouns and those type of things. We're talking in 531, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, we are talking about the records. Is that correct? So, so when we're, when we're discussing this, I hear that Ms. Linetti says it's very helpful to have these definitions. And then G, the change for G, basically just says that the records, which are a requirement for us to be, you know, for our funding, is also going to be necessary to have clarity about who can change, what can change. So for me personally, I feel like, based on the information, I'm okay passing 531 because of the information I've heard from, from, you know, Ms. Linetti and our admin and leadership. So, so I, to me, this is about records. The rest of this that we can discuss in workshop, I feel like is going to clarify some of the other regulations that we need to go over. But for right now, I think I'm okay with the records. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I, I'm having trouble with this, and there's a reason. One of the things that was brought out tonight with several of the students, they brought up age autonomy. Is that right? Is that the right word that they use? At 14, they get to make their own medical decisions. At 16, they can get a driver's license, and we trust them to drive on the roads. But we're not allowing them to declare whether they, they might think they are, they might dress as they are, they might act as they are transgender, but if their parent doesn't accept it, disagrees with it, then they aren't. I have a problem with that. I feel like a 16 or 17-year-old might be questioning, but if the parent has a problem with it, doesn't accept it, then they aren't. And that, that's a problem. So that's, that's my big thing here with this transgender student. It says here, transgender student means a VBCPS student whose parent has stated in writing that the student's gender identity differs from the student's sex, or an eligible student who states in writing that his or her gender identity differs from his or her sex. That, that's what a transgender student is. And if the parent does not agree, refuses to accept it, then they're not. And that's disregarding these students who are, might be 16 or 17, and they have all these other rights. And according to the, I just feel like we're disregarding those students and just pretending that you don't exist because your parents don't, don't allow you to exist as a transgender student. I'm not trying to say that I'm totally against parents having rights, but I just feel that, you know, this, this definition is not right. It's not, it's not morally right. I don't think it's morally right for a transgender student to be disregarded just because there may be a parent, and this is probably going to affect maybe two or three students across our division, where the parent is going to just refuse to write, to state that they are. They're going to not accept it. I don't think this is going to affect a lot of students. I could be wrong. But I just think it's wrong to, to, to create a definition that states that the parent, they can deny it, and then their, the student is not a transgender student. So I, I have problems with this definition because it does not take into consideration that a student can be treated as an adult in many ways. They make their own medical decisions, but if they commit a crime, they're treated as an adult at 16 and 17. So I, I have problems with this, with this. And that, that's why I would prefer that transgender, the definition, the way it's written, I don't know. I don't have a good way to come up with it, but I'm not happy with the fact that the parent can just say, no, they're not. I don't accept it.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And I won't belabor Ms. Anderson's point, but the definition there is in contrast with the definition of a transgender person in the Human Rights Act. There isn't an age limit on transgender person in that act. And so I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with pushing a policy that then requires, per regulation, the parent agreement to use a nickname, a nickname for a 17-year-old, for a 16-year-old. Seventeen years old in our district, in 11th grade, I could name a whole human being, had a whole child and gave him a name, but I couldn't tell my teacher to call me J if I would have been in this district now. I can name a whole other person. So yeah, I am not going to support this.
Okay, Ms. Morton.
I have a question for Ms. Linetti, if that's okay.
You can ask, yeah.
Ms. Linetti, in the model policies or the Virginia Human Rights Act, is there, is it possible to have some of these definitions applied to, say, K through 8? I mean, because I understand a five-year-old is fundamentally different than a 17 and 364-day-year-old, right? And so can we carve out where a definition might apply K through 8, a different definition for 9 through 12? Is that possible?
If you're trying to legally change somebody's name or sex on the record, then I don't think there's any difference for age. There's nothing that defines them because you, as the parent or the legal guardian, control them up till 18 unless they're emancipated. And there, you could attempt to create it. I don't know what supports the law to do that. I think you need some legislative changes if you want to do that. I know the laws you're talking about where at different ages, people under 18 can be considered adult, but those are very specific laws that have been put in place to address the situation. So I think you would need a legislative change if you're going to designate that. I think our concern, if you want us to legally change the sex or the name for the student, it's got to be somebody with a legal right to do that. And I don't think you can arbitrarily decide what the age is for that.
Well, the way I'm reading this, though, Section G, is even the parent can't change the official record. It has to be a government agency, passport, driver's license, or certificate. So the parent can't even change the official record. A government agency has to. A parent, we're saying, can give permission on someone's transgender status. What I'm asking is, can we say those that are in grades nine through 12 do not need parent permission to identify as transgender and use a nickname? I don't think so. Not through regulation?
No, I think you need, I mean, you, you could write it. I just don't think it's supported by the law. I think you need a legislative change if you're going to differentiate by age.
Okay, all right. Well, I, that's what I would like to see. I'll just say that to my colleagues. I would like to see us where K through 8, model policies all the way, 9 through 12, let's recognize the acquisition of sovereignty in those teenage years. Like Ms. Owens said, you can name your own baby, but your parents have to decide your nickname and gender status. That's really strange to me. So that's where I'm at. That's what would get me to a yes vote. Right now, I'm not there.
Mr. Culpepper.
Apologies, I have to circle back around to this, though. So as, as we discussed in the, in the workshop before, I moved to amend 531 as submitted in paragraph two, where it says eligible student, to remove the following five words, a student, or six words, a student attending a post-secondary institution. Paragraph two, under A, at the very top, the definition of eligible student. Eligible student, as it is used in this document, refers to authorities relative to the school record. And as we were just talking about in the, on the last page, you know, for example, the authority to define transgender. Ms. Linetti's example, you know, was a, was an eighth grader who's taken a college math class, would be a student attending a post-secondary institution. I don't think the intent of this document is to give that person the authority of their parent.
I'll second the amendment.
Say what-
I think everybody was trying to find where we were.
Yeah, sorry.
We're on 531, everyone, under definitions, where he, we were talking about eligible student in the workshop. So repeat what you said you'd like to see changed in there, Mr. Culpepper.
Okay, it says eligible student, and then it says who is 18 years old, and then the next clause is a student attending a post-secondary institution. That's the part I'd like to remove, or an emancipated student. So in other words, it should, should say an eligible student is one who is 18 or is emancipated.
Okay, so he made the, the motion, and did we have a second? Ms. Manning seconded.
Clarification.
Okay, wait a minute.
I just was asking, is, come here, I just asked, so he wants to remove the words, a student, remove the words, a student attending a post-secondary institution.
Right, so it'll read, eligible student means a student who is 18 years of age or older, or an emancipated student.
Correct. And the last sentence is there-
That's what it'll say.
...in the-
And we've got a second, okay? Now we need to discuss it, the amendment. So you wanted to say something first, and then one of Ms. Owens?
I'm sorry, I went into discussion a little bit earlier. So I talked about the first part of it, but the other part was, as Ms. Linetti pointed out, the, the authorities given to a student attending post-secondary institution are laid out in law. They need not be repeated here for them not to exist. They're defined in Virginia Code. So removing it from this document doesn't change what a student attending a post-secondary institution is entitled to. It only removes the confusion in this document as it refers to what an eligible student is, with the, with the issues we're talking about in this document.
Okay, everybody understands that. Okay, Ms. Owens.
I wanted to see if Ms. Linetti or somebody else is able to tell us where else in our policies we use the definition eligible student, and if it would be an issue if we are talking about parts of our record that talk about student's record management and their rights to their records? Because I don't want to have two different definitions listed of eligible student in different parts of our policy. I feel like if we have it elsewhere, we need to change it everywhere. And it can be something that policy committee can be aware of and start looking for, but are we sure that making that change is not going to impact confidentiality and other things anywhere else in our policy?
I tried to do a search during the early part of the meeting for this. We use eligible student, adult student, a lot on there, but for the most part, it's referring more to age than, than the post-secondary record part of it. I, I did, again, I did not do an exhaustive search, I've just been going through the last hour or so for it. I think for these purposes, in the, in this particular section, when you're talking about the rights here, we've been talking about amending the record, we're most likely not going to be amending a post-secondary record here. If you had a problem with your grade at TCC or something like that, you would be going to TCC. There, there is a little bit of overlap where some of our folks are cross-trained to teach some of the college courses on there. We can probably manage without it coming out, but I have not, I will say, do you use the term eligible student and adult student? We use it, you see it all the time. It's all, it's constantly, you know, the parent of a minor student or eligible student, we have that phrase constantly in there. I don't think this, proving that will, will affect those rights on there, but I can't guarantee you that without going through everything, but we could fix those policy regulations as we go through them. I just have not had enough time to go through every single policy and regulation tonight.
Is that all you wanted to ask about, Ms. Owens?
Yeah, I guess it does, again, lend to perhaps why I would have liked to waited, but we are beyond that, so.
Okay, Ms. Franklin.
Well, I'm going to say, you had me at hello, and now, I, I think Ms. Owens is right there. I mean, if we're going to continue scrubbing through this, you know, I think that we have to go back, you know, and continue looking at this then, because, you know, there, I think that there's going to continually be things that we, you know, are going to look through and say, well, we don't like this with this. So, I mean, if, we're either going to work on 531 the way it is, and then, or we will, we will just go back and we'll work on it in workshop and make sure that everyone is okay with it.
I'm in there first. I'm in there first.
Okay, Ms. Milne.
So I think of all the things that we could have talked about tonight, the removal of, a small portion of, of the definition of a second, a post-secondary student was like the last thing that we should have been talking about. Because as Mrs. Linetti pointed out, we, we talk about students and adult students a lot. Just because it's in Virginia Code doesn't mean that it shouldn't be in this policy, especially since this division has moved away from advanced classes and more into the dual enrollment and the participation at TCC and other institutions. And so I think just, and I think Mrs. Franklin was agreeing over here a little bit ago, that that is, that's an important piece. It's that reference piece that, hey, you know what, and this is, you know, that there is a distinct difference between what can happen here and what can happen there. And I think the board needs to be cognizant about, about that. But I'd also like to point out that we still haven't made it back to the workshop yet. And it's now just shy of 11 o'clock. And so I think this board really needs to consider a special meeting to get through this. It's 11 o'clock.
Okay, I'm going to step in as the chair. The vice chair and the chair discussed this. Because this is, in discussing this whole situation with the policy, the model policy, with our attorney, she said, what you can do is bring it forth to the whole board. That is why we put this as a workshop tonight. Now, I kind of like want to mirror what Ms. Weems just said a little while ago. With this policy, to go ahead and set some policy, the policy, and then the regulations, because we're going to be working on the regulations now.
Right.
We're not going to leave it up to just our, our superintendent now. So we need to go ahead and make this vote so we can get back into the workshop, continue on with what we need to do. And then we had decided that if we didn't get through all of it, we'd have to bring it back to a, either send it to policy review or bring it back again. But we don't need to be making these decisions this late. And I'm going to parrot what Mr. Callen has said many, many times.
Vice Chair.
So let's, let's go ahead and make a decision. I know that there's two people after Ms. Milne, actually, one person after Ms. Milne. Have you finished, Ms. Milne?
I have.
Okay, so Mr. Culpepper- Okay, so Mr. Culpepper, and then we're going to move on.
With the board's permission, I'll withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Is everybody okay with him withdrawing his amendment? And a second.
I kind of like the amendment. I, I'll, I'll, I'll agree.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So that, that amendment has been taken out. So I am, we're back on Ms. Brown's amendment for 531 to the vote. All right, we are taking a vote.
It's a motion.
Okay, because we've made, it's an emotion, it's a motion, sorry. Okay, so now, all that are in favor of moving forward with 531, as Ms. Brown gave to us tonight, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have seven ayes.
All that are against, please raise your hand.
And we have three nays.
And all that abstain, please raise your hand.
And we have one abstention, so Ms. Brown's motion did pass.
Okay. That brings us to committees, reports, organization, board reports. Ms. Franklin.
I just wanted to announce that we do have a gifted CAC advisory meeting next Monday, the 18th, at 6:30 PM at Salem High School.
Thank you. Anybody else have a committee? Okay, so, um, our, this meeting, this general meeting is adjourned, and we're going to go and back to our workshop. We have, we have a 10-minute break between, okay? So I'm adjourning our regular meeting. It is 10:56.